All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's Thursday, August 19th, 2021. It's 5:30 PM, and we are at Fire Station Number Two in the EOC Emergency Operations Center. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session. The purpose is seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda item herein. The City of Raleigh reserves the right to reconvene, resuscitate, or realign the regular session or called executive session order at this, at any time prior to adjournment. If you'd like to provide public comment for the meeting, you can provide, send an email to citizeninput@rally.com by 3:30 of the day of the meeting. We do not have any citizen input, either in person nor via email, for this meeting. Call the meeting to order, and our only agenda item, which is discuss fiscal year 2022. How weird does that sound?[52.01][52.01](Laughter)
That sounded weird, too.[55.01][55.01](Laughter)
Discuss fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. Anybody else want 2022 to come along?
Tori said about this year.
All right. Are you starting us off? Okay.
All right. Well, counsel, we are here, as the mayor said, 2022. Kind of hard to believe that that's where we're at. Tonight is really is where the budget shifts to you. So, staff is here. We're here to try to, you know, to have the conversation that we need to have. There's a couple of ways that we'll do it. What we've done in the past, this first night, we kind of do a page turner from the budget memo, because that's where a lot of the proposals are articulated, and we can talk about it. Pay, or people, or equipment, or programs, whatever that looks like. So, that's where we'll discuss that. The other thing that we'll do is that what we would propose, now, if we get through everything tonight, then that's all the better. But what we were proposed is that on the second night, which is next Tuesday night, is that we would preserve and discuss the CIP, and then do RAPA. If we end up getting through all of it tonight, that's perfectly fine. But I just want to make sure that we maintain that flexibility. What I want to do for our kickoff, we're not going to go through the whole budget presentation again. You've had a chance to read the memo and see. But there are some things I want to make sure that you're aware of, particularly like some additional resources that have come into play. So, one, you'll remember that, and we've talked about in future years, this will be an issue every year, but it's, you know, we, by the time we got the certified values, we already were finalizing the budget and putting it together. So, what we decided to do, rather than stop the presses and make last-minute changes, which could affect a lot of pages, we decided that we would just park that, and then when we got into this meeting, then we could resurrect whatever conversation we need to have about those additional resources. So, first, let's go to the first slide. And so, these were just some of the available resources that we discussed this year. We knew that we were going to have a bit of a budget surplus based on property tax values coming in of about $826,000. The city council made a decision early this summer with regard to the INS rate, which allowed us to shift about $1 million into O&M. And we did not do a tax note this year, like we've done in the past, when we, you know, under our previous policy or practice. In addition to that, we had some savings on the GO bonds, which provided some additional money. Then there were some additional revenues from our TIF and PIT administration. And then you'll remember, we went through an exercise that identified about $315,000 in program reductions. So, that kind of gave us a great kickoff. And then, in terms of one-time money, we estimated this year that we will have at least a half million dollars in a surplus that we can carry into next year to use for one-time things. It would have been a little higher than that, except that you'll remember, we got that, we got that winter storm electric charge, we had to pay about $336,000. So, at this point, we still want to use roughly a half million dollars for that, and that's the proposed budget was based on. And then we had some one-time leftover money from the CARES Fund. And then, of course, we still have the land dollars out there, but we're still, this is only to disclose, but we still kind of would recommend that we hold off onto that till we decide what we're going to do with facilities. Next slide.
Can I ask a general question?
Sure.
Just so I set my mind right. So, the half a million dollars, that was my question, one of my questions, was it's recurring revenue, but you allocated it to one-time expenses. And you did that...
Go back one slide.
And we can talk about it.
Yeah.
I can't see.
You talking about the surplus, Tammy?
It's the discussion you just had. You just said you used a half a million dollars for one-time costs.
Oh, okay. So, yes, so what was...
Let me ask my question.
All right.
So, that's the revenue you're using for those one-time costs is recurring revenue. It's not one-time revenue.
Technically, it is for a lot of different reasons. Usually, your annual surplus, we've already taken, let me try it this way.
We'll talk about when we get to that slide. We can talk about when we get to the slide.
Okay. All right. Next slide. So, since that time, when last our heroes met, you know, we have, the certified values came out. When we prepared the proposed budget, we left in about $100,000 in surplus from next year, meaning that, looking at all of our revenues and expenses, we left $100,000 on the table in case one. We came in short when the tax values were certified. And/or to provide flexibility for counsel if there was some disagreement on priorities. On top of that, there was also some one-time dollars left over that we had not proposed to allocate. Everything tonight is proposed at this point. Hold on, we're not done. So, then, we received the final certified values, and they came in about $250,000 more than what we were projecting. So, as you go into this budget document, we have $350,000 in ongoing dollars that we could use for ongoing expenses. And then you still have about the $25,000 in available resources from one time that we also can distribute. So, this is a pretty nice shot in the arm. We don't always have this much at this point. In the future, we're going to have the same problem, because you're going to see the proposed budget before we get the certified value. So, this is going to be a perpetual issue. All right. Next slide. I wanted to talk about sales tax, because, you know, for us, this is about transparency. We're making sure counsel has all the information on the table. So, our strategy this year, there's a lot of uncertainty with the amount of sales taxes we have collected in this year. As you guys know, our sales tax collections have just shot through the roof, probably somewhere in the $800-plus thousand range of above and beyond forecast. Our forecast was affected by anticipation that COVID would have an issue earlier in the year, which obviously it did for a while. But there are things that have happened during the year, such as, you know, additional federal stimulus money. And then, there's also was a severe winter storm, which had a pretty big uptick in sales tax because of construction repairs and renovations that were done. So, our current estimate for this year is that we will collect about $7.8 million. The proposed budget is based around 7.657, so about $150,000 or so, maybe $175,000 less, 657, yeah, something like that. We, at this point, are recommending that we don't deploy those resources, because we don't know how much of this year was an anomaly in the way that people spend. It's possible that if we go back to pre-COVID norms, people are spending dollars outside of town more, because they're working outside of town more than what they've done the last year and a half. So, even though that money is technically, we would say, left on the table, we would rather come back at some point during the year and say that the trends are still that we're going to collect more, and they're allocated then. You would be within your right, as the ultimate policymaker here, to say that, you know, we want to take the risk and use those dollars, but we're recommending that we don't at this time, because, again, there could be, there could be some changes that we're not aware of.
Has the comptroller given us any idea of how much of that increase is attributable to the new delivery strategy with sales tax?
Do you know what? The internet sales?
Yes.
We have that. We do. We get that. Robert sends that out to counsel once a month when we get it.
Because that seems to me, that's a huge variable, an unspoken variable that just came into play this year.
Right. So, we actually got all of that this year. You know, in other words, we're getting an amount every month, and I can't remember the monthly amount on average, $30, $40,000, something like that. The other thing on top of it is that we, in 2020, we also received some of that. So, we, the one thing, the one change I think you may be thinking about is that this, I believe at the end of this year, is when that other, you know, they set aside 380 agreements for a couple of years.
Right. They expire September.
That expires in this year. So, when that happens, we may see another uptick in that part of the sales tax. So, you may be right. We may end up having a little bit of this as we kind of see how all that plays out.
I want to add to your point, Whitney, that the marketplace revenue that you referred to for the internet sales, that was factored into our trend of bumping our revenue projection up for next year. What we kind of pulled out was the March uptick from the lumber prices.
Right.
Those type of things are what we kind of pulled out from the average.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
And so, some of this also is inflationary, which means it may continue into next year. We just don't know how long. Mayor?
So, when the tornado hit us, we knew how much in building permits. I think we had, like, we were reporting on how much in building permits and how much new construction in town because of the tornado. $60 million comes to mind. Do we know what kind of building permits we got from the winter storm? And if we don't know it, can we estimate it at some point?
Yeah. I think, I think what they, you know, you obviously have new construction, like building a whole new home, or a, you know, a commercial building, or whatever it is. So, it would be the portion, the permits that are due to renovations, hot water heater replaced. I mean, we, I think we can give you a pretty good estimate, Mayor.
I mean, I think it'd be interesting information to have, because that's, to me, what you're not going to be repeating.
Right.
And I know you said the uptick, you didn't, you know, you didn't factor into your forecast or your budget. But it would just be interesting to me, it sounds like to some others, of what that estimate is of permits as a result of the winter storm.
We could definitely get that and have that before our next meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Next slide. Laura? Oh, thank you, Laura. Okay.
It hurts snoring.
So, I wanted to go over this slide, because now that we have our certified values, I just wanted to make sure everybody can see where we were at last year. And you'll remember that last year was a huge anomaly, because at the point we got the original certified value in July, we still had almost $1 billion under protest, which is just phenomenally unusual for us. So, as a result, we ended up adopting a budget without really knowing where our final certified number, and we didn't know that until December, which is why we did that mid-year budget adjustment and pay and stuff. So, for this year, officially, we're finally having a certified value of over $6 billion. 19 years ago, when I got here, we were barely $3 billion, actually just a little under in the first fiscal year I was here, which was 2003. It has doubled since that time, and most of that has been doubled, most of that has come in the last, the last five years. So, just enormous growth. And then, what we did, this was the, we pretty much prepared the proposed budget on that third column, which was the May preliminary, based on our best estimate, using at that time. And then, you could see the final column is the one for afterwards, and you could see that uptick in certified value, which is what's providing the additional $250,000 to work from. So, at this point, we feel pretty good about that number. The one number we're always a little spooked about is where our final ceilings will come in, because that always depends on how many people apply for tax exemptions, like particularly over 65. But for the most part, you know, we have an estimate for that, and we feel really confident that these are good property tax estimates at this time.
And we get that lawsuit of ceilings about mid-October, just when we have to get that.
So, we never have that again before we adopt the budget. But, you know, a budget is like playing horseshoes. If you're close, you can still win. And that's the difference between accounting, which you've got to get to the penny.
It's good for anal accountants to have to estimate.
Yeah, on occasion, yeah.
It's not all the time.[973.13][973.13](Laughter)
All right. Next slide.
You can program that to be one of them.
Just a reminder, there were some unfunded requests. Counsel, you'll remember, back in June, we went over all of the requests. And at that point, y'all provided feedback on some of the things you would like to make sure that we included. And if I remember right, you know, one of the, one of the direction y'all gave us was, you know, this year, you know, there's been times when, particularly when money is tight, that we have pushed as much as we could to pay compensation. This year, the direction we got is that there are, we need, one more police officer. There are positions we need to, to balance it to some extent, but within the balancing act, to try to also improve compensation as much as possible. So, that's one of the reasons why this year, we ended up with about 11 positions, and we brought pay to within a percent of our target market. So, but in doing that, these were the things that were not funded, some of which will need to be done in future years. So, I just want to make sure that you just keep that in the back of your mind. Some of this may, and some of these items may also be a part of your work plan when we get through with it. Others are in the work plan or technically already funded in some other bucket. Next slide. Okay.
Laura, go back.
Go back one.
Go back one for just a second.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm good.
Were you done, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to show you this slide before we got started, because if you'll remember, last year, we made a dramatic change to our strategy related to CDBG. And in order to accommodate for nearly $1 billion worth of protest value, we made a conscious policy decision that we were not going to be able to fund a lot of the offset of CDBG alley money. And, but as we got into the discussions this year, counsel related a desire to restore that. So, in other words, the amount of money we spend on alley improvements in CDBG, we wanted a like amount of money for other programs that we use, such as housing rehab, or income-based sidewalk replacement, or life message, or, you know, those kinds of programs. So, before we got into any of the fun discussion, we wanted to show you this year that the $186,000 for the alley projects, which is the Tracy Trail Alley, we have restored all of that in the cash, capital maintenance fund, and that balances to the same $186,000. We have some park improvements in that, some sidewalk replacement, utility assistance for Salvation Army, some money for Life Message, and then our housing rehab program. So, again, we won't use CDBG money for those, but we will use our own processes. In some cases, they're similar, but it doesn't have all the red tape that CDBG funds have. So, I just wanted y'all to hear that upfront before we got into the budget.
Are you talking about this again, or is that the last we'll talk about?
Yes, ma'am. We will, we will get into that in, I don't remember what page it is, Mayor, but we can.
Okay. But we're going to talk about it again, though.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Or we'll make sure of it.
Sounds like we want to talk about it again.
All right. Yeah. The whole purpose of this is just to let you guys know some of the things I know we keep, you know, getting questions about. I don't remember if there were any more after this, but let's go just to meetings again, tonight, obviously, and then next Tuesday night, the 24th. Some of you have said that I have called the 24th Thursday, and it's not Thursday.
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday. So, don't show up for a budget meeting on Thursday next week.
No, don't miss Tuesday.
Right.
Yeah.
So, in terms of kind of how we would propose doing this thing tonight, we have access to other documents that Robert does, some of which you've seen, some of which are just backpocket things that we'll pull out if we get into that level of discussion. What we thought we would start with for tonight is to do the page turner, because, again, that generates the most kinds of questions, at least that historically has. We'll just go to each slide or each page. Any questions on this slide or page? And then, like I said, there'll be some that we know that we'll park for a while, and we'll have some discussions on, and then we'll go to the next one. And then, depending on what time it is tonight, if we, when we get to capital the CIP budget, then we can either pause, or we can continue on. So, that's kind of the game plan for tonight. My goal was to keep this to about, well, about 20 minutes. I was going to say 15 minutes. I was about 20 into it already. So, is everybody okay with that plan?
Sure.
All right.
For a long.
Here we go. So, we're going to start with page nine, which technically is page one, but the budget memo.
You misspelled a word.
What's that? I did not.
Okay, Brownie.
Look, I'm telling you.[1311.01][1311.01](Laughter)
That's why I said it.
Yeah. They said, "This year, we're going to Brownie-proof it." And they got into the war room, and they went through it again and again and again, and it's been Brownie-proofed. That's all I can tell you.
And then they stuck at this thing on the front that said, "Totals may include immaterial rounding variances," just in case I found one.
And she did that on purpose.
I know.
I can't believe you saw that.
Oh, my gosh.
Can you believe people go through and refer this memo?
Yes. Yeah. You know, it is funny, because, you know, even us, you know, several renditions into this thing, we were still filing stuff, finding stuff, mostly typos and grammar stuff. But every once in a while, a number is kind of like, okay. What we tried to do, and I'll just tell you this, one of the reasons why we decided not to try to crack back open the budget and try to stick that other $250,000 back in there is really because of how many programs and budgets that have to change. And once you start making that level of a change, then you will truly miss something. So, I feel really good about this. And then, we, counsel, will make that decision on how to allocate those additional dollars. So, first page, any questions on page one?
Page nine.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Page nine.
What is your first page you have a question on? Somebody throw out a number. I have page 13. Does anybody have anything before 13?
No.
No.
I do. Page 10.
Okay.
So, I just want to make this comment. On the slide at the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see that we have a total population estimate of 73,270. So, it is looking more and more like our official 2020 census population will be 69,265, I believe. But this is COGS' estimate for January 1 of this year. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure y'all knew the difference.
Okay.
Because we did not have census numbers at the time we prepared this.
So, COGS is saying we've grown 3,000 since 2020.
Yeah. And COGS uses slightly different estimating methods than the census does. So, you always have a little bit of a difference. There's both a timing issue, and there's a methodology issue. But anyway, just wanted to share that. Okay. Let's move to page 13. First question.
So, I'm confused. Well, y'all saw my question of, you know, we spent so much time talking about response times, and I really liked, was probably one of, was probably one of you two that asked the question about average time on the scene. I thought that was real helpful.
Yeah.
But somehow, in these charts, we've got to incorporate crime trends.
Yes.
Because that's really the issue. I mean, we've got to keep our response time where it is. But you sent out, I don't know who sent out that information today, but...
The UCR data. It's the UCR data.
Yeah. And, I mean, we get that routinely, but it confused me, because it looks like, are you on a fiscal year or a calendar year on that data?
That data would be on a calendar year.
Okay. So, that explains the current year numbers. But it doesn't look like we're trending up in crime, but we feel like we're trending up in crime. I'm really confused.
I mean, it's a perception thing, you know. The numbers are the numbers. You know, and
so the UCR numbers are crimes actually, or crimes actually investigated, as opposed to calls for service. So, traditionally, we track calls for service as a measure of how busy we are. And that gives you a good idea for how many times we're called out to address a problem. But the missing component of that, like Whitney brought up, was how long are we spending on each call for service, which is a better, or those two indicators together are...
Yeah.
The UCR is, so, as an example, we may get a welfare concern call, or an unconscious person call. That could end up being a call for kneels, guys. That could be strictly a straight-up medical call, or it could be a murder. You know, so how it ends up in the UCR code, it's only going to be classified if it is a criminal event. So, you kind of have to wrap your head around the difference between calls for service and the result in UCR Part I, Part II crimes.
Yeah. And all the data together is really important.
Right. So, I'm working with the data analytics. I actually worked with him all this afternoon trying to get some more analysis on. He was having some problems with the code. He's the guy that supplies our dashboard and things like that, where we extract a lot of our data. And he wasn't able to get it prepared for tonight. I was hoping to bring it tonight. He promises me that he's going to be able to work through the issues tomorrow. We have something to do tomorrow. But at any time, if there's anything anybody wants to see, contact me, and I can work with them. He can write some code. He's very responsive. And so, if there's a particular thing anybody from counsel wants to see, just contact me. We can make that happen.
I mean, across the board, I mean, if you ask any councilperson in this room, we would have said crime was, you know, pretty significantly up.
Yeah.
But across the board, every single category is death.
On the UCR codes.
Yeah.
Calls for service are up.
I understand.
What's not covered by the UCR code that might be increasing?
Time, you mean?
No. Categories of crimes.
Categories of crimes.
That aren't, that aren't UCR. There may be minor stuff.
Traffic tickets, things like that. Anything that's a Class C.
Like petty crime, right, Class C, where they're walking out of a grocery store with stuff.
Under $100. That goes to the municipal court. That's not reported to the FBI, because it doesn't qualify under the requirements of Class B and above.
So, are those types of things increasing more than what we've seen in the past?
Probably.
Because that seems like that's what we're all more of attuned to.
I don't, I mean, I don't agree. I'm hearing a lot of...
Other stuff, too?
A lot of, you know, talk, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Noise is the word I'm trying to say about everything.
Yeah.
And it's just not true. I mean, I told Drew I wanted my spotlight story next, this next month, to be on why our crime is going up. Our crime's not going up. I'm so confused.
Yeah. That's a good point.
I'm curious, how much time are you spending with responding to homeless calls?
Oh.
Because that is increasing in this city. It's, I'm curious, how much more of that time is taken.
Yes. And so, the crisis assistance program, you know, we added a second officer. His main focus is homeless. And we also added the crisis assistance coordinator, and she's going to be tracking that stuff. So, we added a, what we call an activity code for a homeless event. So, if you go out on a welfare concern, or if you go out on an unconscious person or something, there's kind of a checkbox for dispatch that says this is a homeless event. So, we're trying to track that. But that's something fairly recent. We've only had that activity code for about six months.
Okay.
So, our data going forward will be good. Historically, our data with regards to pulling out the homeless stuff is not usually good.
I'd be curious to continue to track that. It sounds like you have a good plan for doing that, because I know in Garland, watching their budget meeting the other night, that was a considerable amount of increase in calls to their meeting, was responding to homeless issues. And it's probably going to get worse, I would assume. So, being able to track that and monitor it would be good to know.
Studies show that probably 70% of homeless people have either an undocumented health problem or substance abuse problem. So, they're time-consuming calls, because they're people generally that are in crisis.
So, are y'all tracking the time as well?
And that's a requirement of the grant. So, the crisis assistance coordinator, she was hired on a two-year Yalasheim grant. So, they're tracking and recording the parts associated with that.
Yeah.
So they're tracking and recording the parts associated with that.
Well, you know, just kudos to, to you and your staff because you're, you're, there's a lot of noise out there, there's a growth, tremendous growth in this city, and it sounds like you're managing it well.
Right on straight. It's, I mean, for the patrol division, it's different than when I was a patrol sergeant. They are running from call to call.
Yeah.
One, one thing I did also asked Chief Miller for is, what is the average time we, what is the average time that we're spending on different kinds of these UCR calls? Because again, you know, some might take 10 minutes, others might take two hours, or homicide could take days. And so, um, so again, that's something that we're putting together because I think that would be helpful because then if we see one kind of crime increasing, we know that that's impacting response time, whereas another crime increasing might not be.
It's just interesting. I mean, you know, I'm on a lot of mayoral calls, I'm sure y'all are on a lot of information, you know, and everybody across the metroplex and North Texas and across the nation are having significant increases in these types of crimes and you all are not. It's really pretty remarkable.
Yeah, we're really not. I mean, what I see the most just talk about, and, and I don't know that our statistics back up the talk, and I have a feeling it doesn't, but, you know, I think probably what you hear the most chatter about on social media is vandalism, you know, where someone's.
Drive-by shooting.
Taking stuff off of porches or, you know, checking car doors to see if they're open. And so you, you tend to see that a little more on social media because of ring doorbells and, you know, everyone is sharing that information, which is a good thing in one sense because it, it brings more awareness to the neighborhoods. But I think it does kind of create this false narrative that we have had an uptick in crime. And I think we just have an uptick in awareness.
Yeah.
So it's a good, good metric to look at.
And also these people, they find somebody steals something off their porch, they run to Facebook and report it, but they don't call the police.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, minor items, you're right. I mean, depending on what it is, I think most people probably wouldn't do that, you know, on minor items, but.
Yeah, so it gives a perception that, that we're having more crime really than we are.
So in the, in light of that conversation, talk about the special crimes unit again, why you think it's necessary now or in the near future or.
So the concept of the special crimes unit is a focused unit that is not beholden to calls for service coming in. So we'll focus on a problem area. If we're having a ration catalytic converter thefts or construction thefts where they're stealing those doors, you know, water heaters and things like that, they can focus on that area, they can set up covert surveillance. You know, they have a lot of tools, they would be both uniformed and non-uniformed. And the problem is for a patrol officer to set up surveillance on an area he thinks where something's going to happen, he's going to be repeatedly pulled away by in-house calls.
Yep.
So this unit is freed up to not answer in-house calls, and it's kind of a force multiplier because if we can get those, those crime trends at the beginning, we, we reduce the overall effect of the crime on the patrol division. So that's kind of the.
And where are we in the schema things of needing that kind of unit compared to our size and our population and what's going on in our city?
You know, we, we requested it this year, we didn't prioritize it extremely high. If we think that, again, it's a force multiplier, so having those four, those three officers and a sergeant would have a greater impact than, say, having four new patrol officers who's on the street. We think, in, in battling crime, not so much the response time.
Right.
Because they don't affect.
Right.
But in crime, which is what.
And that's, that's the minimum, it's not up there anymore, sorry. That's the minimum of what you would need for that kind of unit?
Probably.
You can't, we can't go, we'll give you two this year and you can, you can partially investigate.
So we actually did it a couple of years ago on a kind of a test basis. And we, and we had some volunteers when we were heading in patrol, we would pull some folks off and we would have them, and it was successful. It was, they were working on porch thefts, they were working, they were working with the postal inspector on drug deliveries and things like that. And, and it was successful, but it failed because folks had to be pulled away to answer calls for service. And that's our primary mission is to answer when somebody calls 911 and say that.
Which is a good lesson to understand because if we don't have enough patrol officers, we're never going to be successful at that unit.
True.
So we've got to make sure we have enough patrol officers and fund a unit if we need to.
So, yeah, the, the one time, so a month ago, I was on a ride along and I saw a perfect example where that special crimes unit could have been very helpful because we were watching a house and then another priority call came in and we saw somebody walk out and we were like, if only we could have stayed two more seconds, and we couldn't. So, and that could have been good intelligence to have on a case that they were working that we had to be pulled away from.
So I wonder if we could, I wonder if we could use VIPS and, you know, give people some special training. I, I don't know if that would be possible.
No.
Not the case I was talking about.
Well, because it's an observation type.
No, it's an investigative type.
It's a stakeout.
Yeah.
Just, just thinking. Little old people, it's, it's stakeout, okay? No.
I'm, I'm having visuals of mall cop or whatever.
Yeah. There's not a waiver strong enough for them to sign for that.
There isn't.
Yeah, so my thinking was, you know, just as observers and that they could call in and patrol, you know, could come and take care of any policing issues.
I don't think so.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I think VIPS is effective for what they do and why you would not want them doing other stuff. I think ultimately, and I think Dan makes a very good point, is that either you have it or you don't. And, and this market with turnover and things like that, it's going to be hard, and if you don't dedicate it, it's going to be really hard to keep them from being pulled away.
Yeah, you've got to have enough patrol.
Yeah.
That's why you prioritize patrol too. Okay, well, thank you for that discussion.
You're welcome. I have one more question on that page. This is kind of more for citizens that are watching, especially because there's one here that mentioned it the other night. Can you, with one additional detention officer, can you just walk through how far that gets us and what else is needed?
So, we're just kind of in a binding detention right now because we have one supervisor out with a pretty serious case of COVID. We have one detention officer out on maternity leave and we just had one resign. So we did some oral boards today, trying to backfill one that resigned. Can't, obviously can't backfill the other two, we've got to wait until they come back. So we're operating on our, we have a overtime budget right now to fill those gaps. But the goal is to always have a minimum of two detention officers on duty 24/7. So we have, we have four shifts, two per shift would be eight. And then that's, that's your minimum staffing. You've got to add extras in for things like overtime or training for vacation, for holidays, for sick leave and things like that. So our goal, I believe, what we came up with finally was 12.
Yeah, to do the three.
Yeah.
12 plus the two.
Have three assigned per shift and then have two supervisors. Right now, the supervisors also handle operational duties, and that's suboptimal. They're, they're, we really want them to be focusing on their supervisor duties. And so ultimately, we would have 12, uh, 12 plus the two supervisors.
Is that what's in this budget?
No.
It's only one, oh, I'm sorry.
So what, what are we at now?
What's in this budget?
Just one detention officer.
One would get us to 10, but that will include the two supervisors still doing operational tasks as well.
What this, what it does, the one.
Saxi's one of those 10 or the, the person?
Yes.
So the one gets us two per shift.
Right. Plus two extra.
14, 14, which would be three more detention officers if this is approved. So four if, if it's not, but three if it is, would give us three per shift.
Would give us three per shift plus two supervisors.
Yeah, so what, here's why I'm bringing that up.
Just tell me what's, what's in the budget.
Is one extra that gives us two per shift.
So that two per shift is eight. Here's, that's not true. You got, gives you 10, right?
So.
What is the count? Don't tell me two per shift. Tell me what the count is.
I'm going to look it up for you because, and I've had to look this up a couple of times.
They need three more.
That's what we need. There it goes.
Hang on.
So this, what we would end up with, if this, if this proposed budget is approved, nine detention officers and two supervisors. That's 11. If it's not, we have 10 now.
So we're still one short.
Three short.
No, three short.
Three is short.
Three short to be what we would call to be fully staffed, which is one of the questions you have about to be fully staffed at three per shift.
That's a whole different issue.
I mean, I, I.
Yes, it is.
I, I was shocked to hear that we weren't already fully staffed in the jail.
Somebody, okay, somebody asked that question and hypothetically, we would need three. What they're saying is operationally, we need two, and that's why we've asked for one more. And they can do two with that. And, and when we're ready for that question, we can answer the question about what three would get us, what is the difference, what's the benefit of that?
Well, one in the budget gives us nine, which gives us two per shift plus one extra.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're not even close to where we need to be.
Right. That's a big problem.
So we'll come back around to it when we talk about what other additional resources we want to put in.
Yeah, okay.
Did that answer everybody's question?
Yep.
Yep.
And then why those supervisors are doing other stuff is a whole different issue.
Yeah.
It's, it's staffing issue, you know. Number three is.
All right.
All right, any other questions on page 13?
13 was an active page.
Page 14?
Oh, would you say L4?
I'm sorry.
It's going backwards.
I'm sorry.
13?
It's the very last thing, I, I didn't, I didn't see it here. It's the adding $30,000 contract fire inspection dollars to supplement. So can you explain what that is and just, I guess, detail? I don't understand.
I'm a tag teammate with, with chief, but, but I want to say this before he explains what we, what we were really asking for, because he wasn't at the meetings, he was out of, I can't remember if you were on vacation or out sick or, anyway, he wasn't here when staff had their, their discussions. He had asked for a, an additional fire inspector.
Inspector, yeah.
And when it came down to whether or not we can fit that in and the other priorities, we opted to try to put in some additional contract dollars with the premise that, the idea is that partly it's gearing up for the, the amount of inspections coming, particularly when we look at what we know will be happening at Sapphire Bay and what we think might be happening in, in North Shore at some point in the future. So we, we felt like that starting off with contract dollars would still give some relief, but it's still not the position that Chief Howard is asking for. And so now I'll pass it on to him to talk about the position.
Okay.
Well, I tell you, we looked at this this morning, our, there was 12,000 permits issued in the city last year, and I've got two guys just reviewing all that stuff. We're doing more and more in-house plan review now too with the, with the two, the two we have, so they're busy doing that. But, you know, they, they can't keep up.
How, how long does, does an average permit take? I mean, you're saying 12,000.
You've got to go through the planning, the zoning, the plating, the civil, the building, all of that stuff. We look at all that till the certificate of occupancy. I mean, they, they're every step that Manal's teams in. We're, we're hand in hand on all those things.
And then on top of that, they also have to do what they're really supposed to be doing, which is the fire investigation.
They do investigations, they do inspections when we can get in, when we get to inspections. We, we've been only having enough capacity to inspect the, the major target hazards, the schools and the hospitals and things like that. So we're not getting every business every year like we need to. That's what we're asking for.
So explain this contract, why don't we just hire, I mean, I, I get there's a big cost there, so.
Because we only had 30,000 in the budget available.
Right, right.
Now we have some excess, we can talk about it again.
Right, okay.
And the other thing, we also do this in community development from time to time, is that when you, when you have work and it's, it's costing more than the overtime you can afford, you hire a company like Bureau Veritas to come in and help with permits or inspections or things like that. But at some point, that no longer is cost-effective. It's more cost-effective to hire the person if you believe you're going to ramp up and stay at a certain level, because you don't want to do that and then immediately in a year or two, start laying people off.
Well, I mean, yeah, and none of those projects have already come online yet, and they're doing 12,000 a year for two, you know, between twos. That's already past the level.
Well, and we're already, we're already starting to see somewhat of a decline in some permits. Thing is, it's very short and we're about to go right back up, particularly when we start having all the work done at Sapphire Bay.
I think one of the biggest things is that we, when a building's built, the inspections and the permits and stuff is done by everybody else until the construction's complete, we have it for the rest of our days. And the time we're supposed to, we need to inspect them every year, we have to make sure the lighting, all the law safety codes annually, and we're not getting that done right now. Because that's the big need.
I know, when, when Brian Beckner was, before he retired, I would compare steps with him and, and there was hardly ever a day that he didn't walk less than 10 miles a day doing inspections. And that was just one guide, that was before we started having as much of the development as we have right now. I can't imagine how your two inspectors are, are being able to cover even near what needs to be covered right now.
I'll be honest, we're not.
Okay, don't say it anymore.
It is what it is.
You're increasing our liability every time you say it.
Doing the best we can.
There you go.
Yeah.
On top of that, we have to.
We have to do that.
I'm just saying, they work their tail off. I know.
We had a couple of lethality, we had a lethality fire overnight, they investigate arson fires too. So when they, when they're up online investigating fire, you can't expect them to come and inspect inspectors or do some of that stuff the next day.
All right, it's on the last. We see the need for help, which is why we've put in some resources. I don't know if that's going to buy us a year or two years, or if we really, we need to be able to devote more resources, but that was where we were at when we got to this stage.
I have an operational question in this case completely, just because I don't understand fire operations enough to know if we're going to the 4896. And there's a little, because now they can do some training and they'll have some of that at the time, increases rest, which I believe is all a great thing. Is there extra time there to cross training other firefighters when they, on that second day when maybe they're not doing training, they could do some of those inspections?
Well, there was a time that the Texas Commission on Fire Protection was let through, but now they have to have certain certifications outside of the norm to go out and do just company inspections. So they changed that about eight or 10 years ago, and it's, it's made it more difficult for us to keep up with inspection for. It used to, back in my day when I was on a truck, we would go out and do what was called[1669.04] It used to, back in my day when I was on a truck, we would go out and do what was called company inspections. We could do some of these inspections. But now you have to be a certified inspector, certified plan reviewer. So they've upped the game. Unfunded mandate.
Thank you, Chief.
Drop it down.
Yep, it's down.
All right, fourteen? Fifteen?
All right, I want to talk about fifteen. So Aaron, you're in the hot seat.
Yes, ma'am.
So I got the answer to my question of, you know, why are we repairing this for sixty thousand and what else have we looked at? I'm really frustrated. The answer to the question says, you know, now we're going to maintain it properly, but we didn't maintain it properly. You know, it's got a twenty-year life. We haven't, I don't understand why we're at where we're at with a sixty thousand dollar repair.
I may need your help with this one.
Right now? So you want me to answer it?
Yes, no, if you will, because.
So I think, I think critical error number one was when the project was installed, they did not seal the hole. They immediately after the project was installed, had to come in and do some pretty major renovations in some areas. Because we didn't seal it and number two, because of the sheer number of people that use it, at, we're now at the five-year mark, it has seen excessive wear. There isn't a better product. It's the best product in the market for this number of people. The grass that we, the turf that we have at Springfield, we would be in the same boat. Just because of the sheer number of people. But what I think Aaron means when he says that is we will get it sealed, we will get it repaired, we will get it sealed.
So it still hasn't been sealed?
Well, we can't, I think the money is the issue, approving it in this budget. Get it sealed, get it repaired, get it sealed. And then get it on a schedule every single year that we are doing minor repairs instead of waiting five years and having serious repairs to get done.
I mean, that's so, I mean, I'm the one who was out of that playground and saw that big hole and emailed y'all, and you had, nothing was being done until I sent that email.
Yeah.
We've got to do better.
Three hundred percent.
Yeah, I got it.
They should be getting monthly inspections.
We do.
And triggering those immediate repairs, smaller immediate repairs, so we're not back in a sixty thousand dollar boat in five more years.
So sealing is included in this sixty thousand dollars?
Yes.
How long does that last?
They'll have to come reseal about every three or four years.
And what percentage of this sixty thousand is that?
Uh, about half, a little more than half.
Okay.
About thirty-seven.
And that's sealing everything, not just the repairs?
Yes, everything.
And we've never sealed everything?
Never.
So it's about ten thousand dollars a year that you need to escrow to be able to seal it every three years?
Roughly, yes.
Do it every three years.
Oh, boy.
And so we do, you know, part of, part of Aaron's restructure was the new park superintendent, parks and facilities superintendent, when he became director. And that will go a long way in helping us ensure these facilities are protected over the long haul. As opposed to one of our maintenance workers going out, doing an inspection and using his best judgment how bad that repair is. So Matt and his team have gone out and done full inspections and started recording all of that and turning up the maintenance plan and all that good stuff.
So citywide, most of our parks have some kind of composite?
Fibar, wood mulch.
Okay.
Or a new product, I believe, is at Twin Star and at Springfield, which is a turf. It's brand new on the market, relatively new. We've had success, but even those, playground like Springfield, takes significant maintenance. Because it's, you know, it's like football turf, but longer is the best way I can describe it. It still has to be raked, still has to have rubber, rubber particles put in.
So what is the sustainability then of doing the turf rather than sticking with the old-fashioned mulch on a, on new, you know, when we do refurbishment of these parks?
It is the long-term, how long it lasts, mulch. So, and also, this Fibar is really what it's called. It's not mulch. Because it's not what you put in your flower beds at home, right? So it's called Fibar. It's bigger chunks. If I, you put it down today and I play on it, it's messed up and needs to be reraked.
I hate that Fibar.
On a surface like the turf or the pouring place, it is there, and the only time it has to be reraked or redone is when you do a repair.
I definitely understand that, and I agree. I don't like that Fibar either.
That's why it's a better surface for the long haul.
Okay. Because, yeah, my question is, what's costing us more over time? Is it this turf that is new and the latest, greatest, or is it the?
The Fibar probably over the long haul.
Staff time and?
Stack time, product.
But what I would argue though is that it also depends on whether it's high impact or low impact. You know, so obviously in a bigger surface like Kids Kingdom, man, you would not want Fibar in there ever. There's just too many people.
The reality is if we could take every playground and put in pouring place or the turf, we would because of the liability of it takes one kid doing this. And giving a nice little hole, and the next kid loses the grip on the swing, and it's just, it's a true liability. And you don't have that same thing in a playground that has as many people as Springfield or Kids Kingdom or Twin Star has. It's just a real.
It is a safety thing, too.
Absolutely safety.
And it's also a comfort thing. Because let me tell you, you get some of that Fibar under your sandals, it's like stepping on a leg. It is, it is, it is very irritating and uncomfortable. Yeah, I hate that stuff.
All right, so we have a couple of pretty big holes out at Kids Kingdom that are still there. It's a liability out there right now. When do we have this scheduled for repair, Inor? We're going through the budget process.
This, if we get it, immediately.
We're not going to wait till October first.
And what I would like, you know, there are a couple of things that we may ask this on. But if there is no objection to counsel, in other words, if you think, look, whatever else we may argue about, this we want done, I'll free him up and he can get started now.
Is there, is there, I didn't review your memo yet much, Robert, but is there any excess funds in this year's budget to fund this?
Yeah, that's the five hundred thousand we've identified that's helping us fund this in next year.
I'm saying in this year's budget.
Yes.
I see Robert's head going like this.
I'm wanting to adjust this year's budget and just pay forward.
Yeah.
But the answer to that is yes.
I mean, let's move it to this year's budget, get in the budget adjustments and get it done now.
Okay.
Yes.
Aaron, are you upset with that, Greg?
No, sir.
Are you upset with that?
And then, I mean.
You don't want to just fill the hole with Fibar until then?
And if we've got, Wendy, if we've got more than that sixty thousand, let's fund the, let's fund the fund to do the ten thousand a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, start it. Start a big investment.
Well, we obviously will, I see what you're saying, just to ask for the funds. Excuse me?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, Aaron, get started.
Yeah, I was wondering why you're still sitting there, Brian.
All right, page sixteen?
Ken, can we go back and just confirm all the numbers on Wet Zone?
Which page are you on, Whitney?
Fifteen, right?
Fifteen, same page.
Just so you know, most years, they do make money, right? It's, or break even. It's just a very low amount.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty was our COVID year. And so if y'all remember, we never really got open. This year, we're actually making a little money.
As of July thirty-first, right, we were about sixty-nine thousand dollars ahead.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
But see, so we build our operations around making sure that we at least break even. Last year, we could not have because we never really opened.
Well, it was a kind of off year, and this year's even been an off year. I guess my question was, are we taking into account the new GIST calendar, which kind of cuts our year by a month?
We've had conversations about, you know, maybe in the future, we end at the end of July rather than, because you're right, it does have an impact.
Start earlier, too.
You can't. That's, that's one of the benefits. We don't have to wait till June eighth to open. We close a week and a half, close sooner, but we get to open a week and a half earlier than care out of school.
But that's also a two-year experiment.
Yeah.
With GIST.
Yeah.
Experiment. Yeah, we'll see.
The issue with the school, going back to school so early, isn't as much, like, we could still be open on weekends like we do during May. The problem is, we can't get, can't get the kids to work. You know, there's some college kids that hang around, but all the high school ones go back to band and football and everything else they do.
You're going to have to fill in as a lifeguard here and there, Brian.
Well, we talked about certifying.
You, you won't drown.
I can wade pretty good.
Fall immediately to the bottom.
All right. Any other questions on that?
I think council's going to have to start working at Wet Zone and the animal shelter.
There you go.
We don't get paid enough.
You can at least make hot dogs. That anybody can do.
We can make hot dogs.
You think you'll get paid enough?
Was it like your best job of all time?
Any questions on page seventeen?
Keep us moving, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, hold on, give me a second.
Page seventeen.
No.
I know there was a question about the fuel management system. Did we answer that one?
It was answered well.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. I wasn't aware there were four pieces to it.
Yeah.
So I'm good with that.
I didn't even know what a fuel management system was, so.
Manage the fuel.
You're way ahead of me.
All right, page eighteen?
Hang on, I want to look at my daddy's for today innovation thing again. You guys had too many different numbers everywhere.
But they all match somewhere.
Somehow or another.
All right, so you transferred seventy-five, then you funded a hundred and forty, and then I asked how much IT's budget went down, and it was by seventy-five. So why, why would it have not gone down by that hundred and forty also?
And that's because the hundred and forty is not annually budgeted. What is budgeted annually that is going to continue to be ongoing is the PC refresh? So that's the amount that is going to be continually funded or was reduced from their operation because now it's going to be paid out of innovation from that one forty is new funding.
New funding for what? Is it, is it identified what it's for?
Yeah, there's a whole, whole five-year plan, a list of it.
So, yeah, I created it, actually, I created a ten-year replacement plan for all of the equipment in our data centers. So in twenty thirteen, we rebuilt both data centers from the ground up. And as we've needed to replace some of that equipment, I've just, every budget year, I've been going to Brian and say, hey, look, I'm going to need a chunk of money to get this stuff replaced. Two years ago, we spent five hundred thousand dollars replacing a third memory, compute and storage. That leaves networking. The network stuff that we buy is very high quality. So originally, I was going to keep it till the manufacturer would not allow us to purchase support on it. And then we would replace it when it's at end of life, basically. Reevaluating that, it's better to put it on a seven-year replacement schedule. That's kind of industry standard. And that ensures that we have up-to-date networking equipment in our data centers. So it's basically putting everything in those data centers, including UPS, is on either a five-year replacement schedule, it's got a lot of moving parts, or seven-year replacement schedule for all the networking.
I want to be a little more blunt, and what I'm going to say is that, you know, we've had a revolving fund to replace desktops and laptops. What we haven't really done is adequately fund all the other, call it back office stuff, the network, the switches, the, you know, the telecom equipment, the UPSs and things like that. And Joey really advocated this year that we start escrowing funding, you know, just like we do with our vehicle equipment replacement fund. And so he's identified through his ten-year plan needing about a hundred and ninety thousand. We had some one-time dollars that could help us this year. So we, we have set aside an amount to start that, and then next year, we would finish the rest of it, and then we would have a hundred and ninety thousand a year. Now, on top of that, we have like one large purchase to replace the network switches, about seven hundred and fifteen thousand, which we either could do two per year, but the problem is technology changes so fast, there may come a point where, you know, they're not talking to each other the way they need to. But ultimately, this is no different than Gary's Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what it's going to be used for and that we're not double dipping, and I'm sure you're not, but. So you think funding it, I know the seven fifteen is going to get used for the network switches. You think funding a one forty this year and a one ninety thereafter, you're going to be able to fold those things in timing-wise?
Yeah, so there'll be some years where we don't submit as much, some rolls over, and there'll be some years where, you know, we've got a seventy-five thousand dollar spiral to replace. Among the other equipment. It's going to, it's going to balance out over time. To an extent, but there are still going to be peaks in that.
I don't want anything going wrong.
And do you think, I mean, as long as I've been here, you know, IT has had very significant and necessary annual one-time needs that we've been able to fund for the most part, thank goodness.
Yes.
Does this get rid of that, or do you think that still happens?
Yeah, so this would take the place of that. So I wouldn't have to go to Brian and say, hey, look, I need five hundred grand to replace our memory source compute. It would be done incrementally through that fund.
It just doesn't seem like enough. It just seems like, based on our historical, what's happened historically, you've spent a lot more money than this annually.
But let me say this, though. So let's say that, you know, every so many years, we have to replace the ICS system in the police department. Or our finance system, you know, Munis, you know, is now our, but, you know, those are like million-dollar purchases, you know, when those happen. And we usually finance them. It's like the difference between buying fire engines, which we finance.
Right.
And then buying everything else out of cash, which we planned for. That's what we're trying to do with this. So there's still going to be.
This is your IT CIP.
Yes.
There you go. Perfect way to explain it.
You just found a new name for it.
Yeah.
It's it.
It's up.
There you go.
All right, I got it now.
This will keep you up with technology, is that correct?
Yes, it will keep us current, at least for the next ten years. And the way I wrote it is we're just going to do the exact same thing in the next ten years.
Yep.
So it's just going to be revolving ten-year plan.
Good.
Cool.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, any other questions on eighteen? All right, anything on nineteen? But before you move on, I have something that's not in any of this. Okay.
So you chose to talk about it now?
You have to wait till page twenty.
Yes. Right, so, because I didn't even know this, but Brian told me that April next year, we have our seventieth anniversary.
It's on the wall in the conference room.
Is there funding in here to support anything that we want to do with that?
No, there's not.
We should do that seventy-five, not seventy.
We could, we could.
I'm serious.
I mean, there's other stuff that, but I'm just wondering.
We could do.
Since we're talking about all stuff, is there?
Something more muted, you know, something that still celebrates, but then have a bigger celebration at seventy-five.
Hey, I'm okay with that. I just didn't know. I wanted to ask the question.
I think all of council has to grow beards in a beard contest.
I'm fine with that. I'm halfway there. Blake's not.
We hit our seventieth year birthday. Seventy years of incorporation as a city.
I'm just trying to figure out, and that's okay, I'd rather delay it anyway, but seventy-five and seventy, what's the?
Seventy-five is a.
Seventy-five is a major milestone.
Yeah.
Seventy's not.
Twenty-five, 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 twenty-five.
It's just kind of what people celebrate. But, you know, to Whitney's point, I, I think it could be good to begin setting aside some funding, you know, each year between seventy and seventy-five so that, so that it can be done well.
We can do that with hotels. I mean, we got funds that we could never use today that we can use.
By the seventy-fifth, I think you have access to other funds.
We let, we let the other council do with that.
I don't even be in this city.
Because we'd have additional hot tacks, too. Okay, we can move on.
Seventy-five, you haven't done.
That's seventy-five, you have Sapphire Bay.
Seventy-five, getting all the hot tacks.
Let's do it.
That's what I'm doing.
I said we can hire Cleveland Mac for fireworks on May that year. It's only.
One million.
Safe now, you know.
Speaking of fireworks on May, can we just do a really good local band and not do these?
Don't spit that water. He's about to lose it.
I mean, that first band was really entertaining.
Who needs to retire?
So I have some, I have some different ideas about that.
Please.
Good.
Or at least implement an auto-tune system at the minimum.
We need a sound engineer to be like this.
That was really challenging.
I'm going to put a bug out there for Bonnie Ray next time.
Yeah, why don't you do Bonnie?
One point three million.
Willie.
I'd do Bonnie.
I don't know who that is. Bonnie and Clyde, I don't know who.
Bonnie Ray.
Get Willie Nelson, he may come for nothing.
We are on page twenty now.
Page twenty.
Page twenty-one.
Boy, we're moving now.
I just want to get the line items.
Go faster.
Page twenty, twenty-two. Twenty-three, okay. We're on compensation. I think we should park for a while. Page twenty-three really kind of gets into compensation and then people. And I think this is a really good place to pause for a while and make sure we all understand where we ended up at. We've even had somewhat of a challenge explaining to staff a little bit about the raises and stuff like that, too. So first off, I want to go back to the beginning of tonight's meeting where we kind of talked about, we wanted to push compensation as far as we could towards the target, realizing there were positions we absolutely had to fill, like the four police officers. So we ended up with eleven in here, one of which is being funded by the utility fund. But pretty much the rest of those are general fund positions. Compensation, we got within a percent of our goal. And there was a time we didn't think we would, but we were able to get down to about a percent of our target. And Richard, do you remember what it is about what each one percent cost to get us down to one percent closer?
It's somewhere between thirty-five and thirty-nine thousand.
No, that's, that's tenths, I think. So about three hundred and fifty thousand for one full percent?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and then, of course, the general funds portion of that would be 85% or about 85% of that. So I'm just going to put it bluntly, that had I known what I knew with the certified values, I would have pushed this. I'm just going to, we probably would not have done any more than the 11 new employees, we would have pushed pay more. So what we are proposing is, but what made it in the proposed budget would bring our employees to less than 1% of the market as of February of 2021. So as our employees will tell you, and it doesn't take long for them to figure it out, when we get to October 1st and we provide those raises, other cities are providing raises at the time, which is why we're always going to be a year behind. A lot of other cities do it that way, too. You know, they're static at the time that they do their, some of them don't, they may wait three years before they do another pay plan. We are at least doing it every year, so we know how far off the market we are. And when we start trying to figure out how we might allocate the additional dollars, I just, I know there's other priorities, there always will be, I just don't want to lose sight of that, that we could push a little further that way. Is there any questions on compensation before we talk about new people?
What was the price again to get the variance to zero?
So roughly, a full percent is about $350,000. So you take 85% of that for the general fund, and it's probably just under 300 to do a full percent. We're at .92. Richard, did we ever figure out the gap between .92 to get us to 1, or get us to zero?
It's 1.82 million.
Okay, so what's the difference between that and what we have?
350,000.
How much?
350,000.
Okay, but that's the full, that's all funds. The general funds would be under, just under 300, pretty close to 300.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So any other questions on that? I do want to say, and I think you already have seen, we really tried to make it clear, it does include step increases as well as an adjustment on October 1st.
Yep.
Okay. And then for the new employees, we had a request, sorry?
When's the last time we did an October 1st adjustment?
Two years ago.
You sure?
Yeah, we didn't do one during COVID year, so fiscal year 20-
I know, but there were some years we did it six months down the road.
That was before this last paper plan went into effect several years ago. And what we've been doing since, there's an October adjustment, and then there's either a step or a merit.
Right.
And then with COVID, we had to wait till the half-year mark. But you are right in previous years-
I've done too many budgets in my-
I know, you have, yeah, absolutely.
But I will say, just, we've done a lot of catch-up. We have done a lot of catch-up on our pay.
It was two years, but we did the big analysis and caught up on steps and caught up on all that. That was a big year.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so in terms of positions, we did have a request for, Robert, help me out. How many did we ask for, how many new employees were asked for? I know 11 made it in, but how many were asked for?
14, right?
It was 13 and a half, I think.
13 and a half, 14.
Okay, in fiscal year 2021, partners initially requested 35.
No, that was 2020. That included the new firefighters, too. Okay, yeah, it was, it's close to 14. So we were able to get, excuse me, 11 of them in there. So the fire inspector is not in here. There was a list of what didn't make it. Robert, help me out with that.
I'd like to know the cost of a fire inspector.
Fire inspector.
ASO.
How much?
What do you, what's the side conversation?
How much for the fire inspector?
Well, there's already 30,000 in the budget, so it's not-
You're reducing, you must subtract.
Okay, are we, are we going to talk about this now? Are you just going to tell us what's in the budget, and then we're going to come back to this?
Well, no.
Because I don't feel like we can talk about this right now, because it sounds like y'all are trying to make conclusions, and we haven't gone through the whole budget yet.
Well, we need to finish the whole budget first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just making sure that we understood. We know this shows you what made it in, but it doesn't show you what didn't make it. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that information. And then answer any questions you're going to have.
We had some side conversations going on in deal-making. That's what I was trying to-
It's Wall Street over here.
That's what I was trying to cut.
Yeah, the wolf.
All right, so Robert, this is-
So this was the unfunded request. So it includes the four P E, F T E for the special crimes unit. The, there was a request for our contracting compliance officer for Carson Rec.
Diversity coordinator.
Diversity coordinator request as well.
And I don't see the fire inspector.
The fire inspector, yeah, isn't on here until we added the 30 for the time, but that was also-
Okay. So that's the four people that, or three point whatever, that didn't make it. So the diversity person, the fire inspector-
Internal auditor.
The internal auditor, and-
The crime unit is four people.
And the crime-
There should be half a studio person on there, too.
Yep. So that's what did not make it into the budget. So are there any questions about any of these that did make it in, or any of the ones that did not make it? Any discussion we want to have?
I think I want to come back to it at the end.
Yeah, not right now.
Are you okay with that?
Like Tammy said, we need to finish the rest of the budget, I think, before we come back.
Okay, yeah, that's cool. However, y'all want to. Any questions on 24? I have had a couple people, I guess they either watched the video or whatever, citizens kind of have asked, what do we mean when we say we had the lowest property value increase in recent years? So I just wanted to kind of say that, when you look at what we've seen, we've seen 12% increases, 10% increases for several years in a row. This year, it was more like about 4%. So that's what I mean by that. 2015, our property values increased 0.3%, but that was the first year coming out of the Great Recession that it didn't decline. And then since that, we've seen pretty significant increases. And so that was my only point, is that, that I believe, this is my belief, that we will be just as challenged next year. The reason is, is that when they calculate the property values, it is based on January 1. So we have a major billion-dollar project that will add a lot of tax dollars in the future, but we will not see anything vertical probably before January 1. They may go over, start going vertical, but not enough to really add any value. So the next year's budget, 2023, will be just as challenged as 2022 in terms of total property value. Then after that, we may start to see some pretty, pretty good increases again. But for two years, I believe, we're going to be stuck around that 3% to 4% range.
I don't know. I mean, I think this year, we're stuck at that range because the, you know, D-CAD and R-CAD didn't go out there and jack everybody's appraised values up like they have historically over the last couple of years. There's been so much real estate activity this year with pretty high inflated values, that those two taxing entities can use those data, those data points pretty quickly and allocate those increases across neighborhoods. And those are going to stand because we got real sales now at those high levels. So I agree with you on a commercial standpoint. I don't think I agree with you on the residential standpoint. I think we're going to see a pretty big increase next year. I think they're going to rebound back because they didn't do it this year.
Well, and you are, good point, Mayor, because, you know, the last few years, they have reassessed as much as 40% to 50% of our residential property. And this year, we're going to be less than a third. So it was a pretty significant adjustment.
And they're going to jack it off next year, I really think. And they're going to have the data to support it.
Yeah, okay, it's a good point.
Real good data.
I ain't told you.
How is that leading to frozen tanks?
Yeah, depends what happens over the next four months.
And inflation, too.
All right, any questions on page 25? Page 26 or 27?
All right, I want to talk about this 682,000. All right, the senior accountant, 300,000, the grant administration's 382.
Gotcha.
So the whole 6.8 million, only 200,000 is not allocated from this chart.
That is correct. When we went through that exercise, we were trying to use tenths of millions, and so it left about 200,000 unallocated.
So everything on page 26 are hard costs. We're going to go spend 1.7 million on generators if we go under this plan.
Yes, that's right.
When you go to the senior accountant of the grant administration, that's just reimbursement of our own internal costs.
Yes, over a three-year period to monitor the reporting of the grants.
Right. So I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the allocation. What I'm saying is, this is going to be a reimbursement of operating dollars to the tune of 682,000. So we have those funds available for some other spending that we have not presented in this budget.
No.
We didn't plug in the operating dollars to cover these to begin with. We are purchasing these straight from the grant funds. We're not using program revenues for these purchases.
I'm not talking, those aren't purchases. These are purchases, huh?
It's a new hire. It is not reimbursing for an existing position. That is a new position.
What is a new hire? We don't spend 300,000 on a senior accountant. We don't spend 382,000 on a grant.
Over three years.
Over three years.
Yes.
And it's not, the grant administration isn't a person. It's to help with a consultant to make sure we follow the proper purchasing rules, kind of like we did with the tornado, and ensuring that we follow FEMA's rules. And these aren't FEMA's, but they will be a little bit different.
Such as CDR McGuire, how we did for the tornado.
I still believe that.
I don't understand. I mean, this is spent money. I don't understand what we're going to do for three years. I'm really confused by this, guys.
So let me say this. There are, even though there is a whole list of things that we were allowed to spend these dollars on, it is no different than FEMA money or anything else. You still have to be able to prove, at the end of the day, when you get audited, you have to be able to prove that you spent it on allowable expenses. For FEMA, CDBG, each of these acts, there's usually all kinds of, there's sometimes there's bullet plate things that we're very familiar with, and then there's also new rules and regulations that they may have installed. What we talked to you guys about back when we did this exercise to allocate these dollars, was that we needed some help to be able to manage these funds. And that was why we came up with this amount. It's over, spread out over three years. It will take, it will take more than two years to spend these funds.
And then further than, longer down the line to report on them.
I understand, but every employee has 2,080 hours a year. You're telling me it's going to take 6,000 hours of a senior accountant to administer this, and another 6,000 hours of a grant administration?
No, no. The discussion on this was to fund the senior accountant position because that position currently is split between the current grants that we have, as well as other duties, too. This is not all of that person's position. This person does a lot with all of our PITS and our tip administration and a whole lot of other stuff. Because we're adding this, another state for grants, potentially, we just got on this year, and now we have six and a half, or almost seven million dollars of ARPA funding, we need to have a senior accountant solely dedicated to grants. So we've requested an additional position so that a senior accountant could be dedicated solely to all the grant reporting, accounting.
Okay, I get that. I support that. We're not reflecting that in the budget. We're kind of back-dooring it. I mean, we are adding a senior accountant that is going to have administration of this, plus a whole bunch of other stuff, that's being funded through the ARPA funds. But we're not reflecting we're adding a senior accountant, and we should be.
Well, because we've already done that in this fiscal year.
Okay.
So when we met in June, what we told council was, we already had those funds. We figured out how we were going to pay for it for the next three years. Nobody had an objection. So I told, I authorized Wendy to go ahead and hire that position now.
Well, I think the reason why, I can see your point on where you're going, is because you don't see it shown in the general fund as, or adding a position. And that's just solely because it's going to be funded by the ARPA funds for the next three years. And it's not coming out of general fund.
I understand, but there's positions that don't come out of general fund that we reflect.
Right, like the EMPG for emergency management, that's paid for with a grant halftime. That's still in there as an FTE.
It is. It's shown in the salary, or in the employee count.
Right.
The position is reflected.
So I think what Tammy's saying is, this position should also be shown as an FTE, but it's being paid for by a grant.
It is. It's shown in the full FTE count.
Yeah, where the disconnect in my part was, is it's current FTE, not next-year FTE.
Okay.
I was expecting it as next-year FTE.
99.
So it should be already in the count.
I thought it was in the count.
In the full count now.
Which, I'm not going to pay attention to that level of detail, to understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I got it.
I'm not done with the page. If you have another question. So in the unallocated portion, there's 219,000. What was the, were we wanting to leave this unallocated?
No, no, you can allocate this. What, if you'll remember from that whole list, we had, we were trying to balance by using just tenths of the millions. So we would say 2.2, when it might have been 2.14. And when it all, the dust settled, we still had 200,000 left over. So those 200,000 could be allocated, or we can save it for a little bit until we make sure that there's no any overages.
Is that a discussion here or later?
You can have that anytime, and here is mine.
Later on in this, have you got somewhere you're going to lump all of these extras together?
Yeah. This will have to be spent a certain way, too. This can't just be lumped into general funds. So it will have to stay lumped into ARPA. And keep in mind, yeah, and that keep in mind, too, that a lot of those are rough, one quote, right?
And there's no hurry to make this decision.
No, I know.
Well, if we can, we should.
You can have a discussion now about what kinds of things you might be interested in. We will have a wrap-up session in next Tuesday night.
Okay.
But, but we have a lot to get through tonight, which I don't want to get bogged down in just one thing, but I would say, this is the time to start talking about these things.
But there's, you know, there's almost $6 million, well, there's $6.3 million of hard expenditures here. I'd like us to go, let's figure out if we're close on these estimates before we start allocating that 200,000.
Yeah, and I think what you had this initial conversation was, we have three years to spend this money. You don't know what's going to come up a year from now, a year after now, or we may want to allocate some of those funds.
Well, and Matt, it's a great point. And that's why we set aside 1.2 million of it for future utility projects, which could also help offset if some of the other ones come in higher once we get the bids in.
Right. My one question was, Joey, there's network switches here, and then there's network, network, network switches in the one-time additional budget. What's the difference between those? What's in the one-time additional? How much is that? You had 12, the 7, like 750,000 for 12 network switches, and then this 24 network switches was 102,000. I'm just curious what those difference?
So the switches in the one-time are actually firewalls. We want to upgrade our firewalls.
Okay.
Okay.
The 192 is?
No, that was the 715, right?
No, the 715 is the 21 switches at all of our buildings.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This 192 says, replace aging network switches that connect all buildings to broadband.
So our core switches and the firewalls are where the fiber goes into from all the buildings. And that's what we're replacing with the 192.
Don't you love neophytes asking you questions like that?
Sorry. Just saying, we need a map on. I was just curious, because they're both called network.
Do the diagram.
We're replacing the brick wall in front of our network.
I'm like, why am I questioning this?
No, no.
You got a brick wall in front of the network.
It's IT CIP.
It says IT, so.
It's it.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
So this also does not reflect the additional million, too. Is that what I just heard you say?
The list does, but it's parked right now as a set aside.
Oh, future utility.
Yes. Yeah. That's because when we started looking at the list, and if y'all remember, Gary had proposed several different other utility projects. I don't remember who suggested it, but at one point, one of the, somebody on council said, you know, that there's a lot of changes coming. We got three years in this program, and so, and we don't know what other utility projects we might have, some other overrun that we need to use. So at that time, I think that was why we made that decision, to set that aside. This list pretty much reflects- This, this list pretty much reflects, with the exception of the rounding of the 200,000, reflects that June discussion.
Yeah, it's just hard to remember all that.
Yeah, I understand.
I can't even remember what I had for dinner last night. You're terrible.
Okay.
All right, any questions on page 27 then?
All right, so here's my question on 27. So the 4665 is the additional recurring revenue, the, the new revenue we have to allocate to the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
But you see that the $500,000 surplus that we're carrying over from this year, which is one time, and then.
Okay, that's one time.
Yes. And then.
That's my question.
Yeah. One thing that I would also just want to point out, we broke out the first two lines, increase in property tax revenue. Because if you'll remember, the comparisons we do is adopted to propose. And so when we adopted last year, we still didn't know we were having those other revenues. And that's why it's off, and that's why you're seeing this. Had, had that not happened, then, then you would not have that other 1.3 showing because it already would have been distributed in the adopted budget. So don't get hung up on that.
We're not.
Okay. Page 28.
So, Robert, the one-time stuff on here adds up to 500,000?
Who are you?
No, ma'am, the 500,000 is not this time.
Robert?
Robert.
So.
We have 4.6 million, 4665 revenue. And we're allocating 4.5, so I don't know where that.
All except 25,000. We were 25,000 of one-time money for council's allocation.
That's correct.
That was on the second screen.
So if we looked at this page, 28, and added these all up, it'd be close to that 500,000.
Close, but some things are added. I mean, this is some, some, one proposed item may be a combination of one-time and ongoing. So you can't just really add down the list.
All right, yeah, and I'm not trying to foot numbers. I'm just trying to ask conceptually.
But generally, yes.
Okay.
All right. Did we not fund, I don't think we did. Did we not fund training for fire?
So we, we did fund the training officer. That, that's one of the 11 positions that we're proposing. Is that your question?
No, it was a, it was an actual training.
I think we're adding like, we've wanted to add like 30.
Yeah, okay.
Was that on our list that didn't get?
I thought it was, I just wanted to be sure.
Training what? What are you talking about?
It was a training budget for the year.
Yeah, training budget increase, 27.
Yeah, the increase might not have made it in here. I mean, I don't personally remember that, but I don't, it may not have.
There's the training budget increase for 22,000.
Yeah, it's up there, piss line.
I thought I saw that, I want to make sure I wasn't.
Piss line down.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you.
And the difference between 4665 and 4540 is reflected?
That's that 100.
That's that 100,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on page 28? Okay, 29.
I have a question, I don't know where it was.
What was it, Brown escaped you?
Oh, I just, I had a question mark next to this, engineering reorganization. I don't know what the question was. I'm old, I don't even know what I had for dinner last night. So I, you know, there's a question.
Did you want to know what they're doing?
They're reorgan, they're going to move together. Are they the same type of engineers?
So we, we said, yes. So, so here's.
No is the answer to your question, but finish your story. They are not the same kind of engineers, which is what Brown is asking.
Let, let me say this, they're, they're engineers. They're civil engineers for the most part. Here, here's the challenge we face in this market. You know, if, if the market was different, then, then the story may be different. But we, we have engineers that we need in public works and we need, have in development services. A lot of cities our size have one department. And for years, we've kept them separate. And we've done that probably 10 years now. Problem is that in, in hiring those engineers, you're almost competing with each other. And if you have capacity in one department and you have a need in the other, then you're not filling that. So we, are all these guys, they're, they're, they're overworked with the amount of projects we have going on in this town. And I know you guys know that. But just going out and hiring another engineer is extremely difficult. So we've talked about this for years. I'm just going to say for years. And finally, you know, staff said, we've got to do this. And, you know, consolidate them into one department. We have the room and community development. You'll gain synergy from having them share data. We don't have to keep duplicate plans. Everybody's sharing the same information. You have collaboration, they're all working together. If we need somebody to shift into development services part of the world to work on doing stuff, we can do that. If we got to move them back to, you know, to public works, that's why we, we thought we would do that this year. And, and again, I wanted to do this many years ago, but this is, this is the year we felt like we were able to pull it off. We just think it's just too important. Now, who the, the director, you know, the city engineer would report to, you know, was also up for discussion. But it really, it's the premise of consolidating the two that was the, I guess, the, the non-negotiable.
So the 59,000 is just like moving expense or something?
No, part of it's, no. There are someone, there are some costs, but no, this is primarily shifting around. You're going to have a city engineer who's now a director, so you got to compensate for that. So it's, it's also those kinds of things in there too. It's not just the cost of moving.
But it should, in the long run, create some efficiencies that say this.
We, we believe it will. Most of that will be buried in capital projects or even bond dollars that we won't be able to figure out how to use for operating purposes. But, but we, we really believe this is a great decision for our city. And we have an outstanding director who will be our managing director who will also oversee engineering. And we just cannot wait. We're so excited about it. We're actually going through the implementation now. Any other?
It's a good move.
That probably wasn't the question you had.
I don't know, but it's, you probably edited whatever it was.
It was a lot for you. Forgot what the question. Any question? Sorry, yes, ma'am.
Brian, since we're going to be paying for the playground rehab, the one-time expense, should it not be proposed anymore? Because we're going to do it this year.
So that, that was the 60,000 that we discussed earlier. So that is a one-time expense, but.
You taking it off here?
No, no, that stays on, all these things made it in the list. And then, and then as we talked about, we're probably going to have about $30,000 every two to three years that we're going to need for, to reseal, repairs and reseal.
She's right. We talked about taking it off this list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It brings up 18,000 dollars for.
You're keeping track of those numbers, I'm sure, when we go back.
So this, this is coming off this list.
Yes.
We got 60,000 to play with, almost 61.
All right, I just struck through it.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam.
Glad you're awake, Pam.
Hey, I took a nap.
All right, any questions on page 29? And going back to kind of when we knew about the additional revenues, we were able to put it in text format to, to let you know, but we didn't have time to really spread it through the rest of the budget. So, all right.
I'm just getting a text about, do we want a break? Is there a natural break coming up?
Yes. Page 31 is the natural break, mayor. I was going to suggest the same thing.
Okay, so we're there?
Yes.
Yeah, we're there.
Can we take a, a one-minute break? Any questions on page 31?
He says he's fine with a half year.
Any questions on page 32?
Move fast, hold on.
Any questions on page 33? Mayor, I know you had a question about exemptions, did you get?
Yeah, and it was answered in the email. What I'd like to do, what I'd like to ask is, you know, we changed some exemption amounts in what year?
Four.
14?
I think so.
That is, I would have said it was two years, three years ago. That is crazy.
I remember that.
So it was discussed in the summer of 2014.
Okay.
It was adopted or made official in September of 2014, but it would have been effective for the fiscal, fiscal year 16 budget.
16, that's right, because that's one more year. Okay, all right, that's right. Can someone do an analysis of where we'd be if we hadn't have done that?
I'd be broke.
We, we disclosed that.
If we hadn't changed it.
Yeah. I want to know what the change did for us.
Okay, oh, yeah. Yes, Robert can do that, it's about like 20 minutes.
Send it to us in email. I don't want to know tonight.
Are you thinking we might need to consider that again at some point?
I don't think we can. We got it at such a low level. But we disclosed, you know, how much these exemptions and the senior tax freeze cost us.
Yeah.
In, in tax rate? Where would we be if we hadn't even made that change?
Yeah, because it went up significantly this year.
So I'm not, I am not proposing that we, you know, make another change. I just want to know what it did for us.
Okay, that's fair. I think that's a good object lesson.
Yeah, and so just kind of recap, it was about $67,000, I believe. And it'd been that way for several years. We went and looked at what all the other cities in Dallas County did. And we dropped their, the seniors to 30,000 and the other one, disabled to 50. And then, so we could calculate that differential and provide that information.
Yeah, I just think it's good for us to know.
Mayor, do you have a description of it?
And Robert likes doing things like that.
All right, 34. Any questions on 34, or say 35 even? Okay, 36. 37.
For the electric bill that kind of went out of bounds, is there anything else that we can do to protect ourselves from that in the future? Because winter storms like that are going to come again. And I'm afraid we're going to get stuck with another $300,000 bill for something we didn't expect.
We know that.
We got to hire.
I don't want to be facetious. So let me, let me say this. We actually, I believe, have done just about everything we can to insulate ourselves from the peaks and valleys with our partnership with TCAP and then the Encore Steering, City Steering Committee and the Atmos Services Steering Committee. Every, there were four parts to the bill that we pay, and three of them are locked in within, within reason. The one that was not are what they call ancillary charges. And the state made the decision on how to allocate that and basically was forced down our throat.
Okay.
So on the electric, we, we paid it one time. But what's in the works now is the, the gas part. And so the Railroad Commission is going through, what they're going to do is what they call securitization. And what they're going to do is allow them to recoup, they'll sell bonds. They'll pay all the providers like Atmos, their portion of whatever this extra was. And then they will add an ancillary charge to every, your bill, my bill, Brownie's bill, all of us. And we're all going to be paying for that over a very long period of time. That's coming. And, and of course, it won't be as much as the electric, but the electric was a big shock for a lot of us. Not to mention electric companies like Denton has their own and where it was extraordinary.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions on 38 or 39? And we've kind of already hit on some of that. It's important to go through this section though because there are some funds that we have not discussed until we actually get to it. Enterprise funds, page 40 and 41. We know in the utility fund, we're lowering the sewer rate by, residential sewer rate by 5%. It averages about $3.24 per month per customer. Any questions on that one? Other than it's raining.
Yes.
That has an impact on Wendy's money. Questions on 42?
It's hard to complain about August rain.
Yeah, truly.
43?
Why don't you do two pages at a time?
Oh, okay. Well, okay, when we get to 45 and 46, we probably need to pause again. Okay, so 45 and 46 are all those special revenue funds that we have. Police seizure, hotel motel, the PEG grants, CDBG. So.
We'll recognize you in a minute.
It's like a classroom, I got to read.
You just have to say Brian, so he hears you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have been looking up.
You're in a sentence.
You're good.
Okay, so, so my question is, are there any questions about these funds or what we might be doing, or what we can be doing, or any of those kinds of things?
Okay, no questions, move on.
Okay, hotel motel. The, the change there, or the proposed, I guess, I, I'm assuming that includes the projected cell, cells from the current, or the new hotel, the home to?
Comfort Suites. Coming online this fall.
I think that maybe, because we know the latest issue with the Comfort Suites, is that also taking into account that challenge?
How do we address that? Do we remember? I know in this year, we did get extra money that was considered a long-term receivable at the end of last year. We haven't gotten it all.
Right.
And we're still having trouble with collections.
Right, no, I know that that's.
And I don't want to get in on the TV thing too, too deep into that one. But, but for projections.
Do we feel we have budgeted conservatively in light of the facts we know about the current hotel situation?
Absolutely, great question to ask.
There we go.
Wendy will answer that once Robert tells her the answer.
Okay. And the expenses on the hotel motel also have a question on. If we're receiving, or propose to receive 169, why are we proposing to expend? I only assume this is because of carryover. Is that correct?
I don't know that, I don't know that. Do we have an answer yet, Robert? What are, what are we spending the hotel motel?
Hang on, we're answering the revenue question right now. So when you say flat, are we really going to collect flat? Or are we going to be in a worse situation than flat?
We could be in a worse situation than flat.
That was my concern.
How much worse? What do we have in there for that hotel? What is that flat number?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand for revenue for the Comfort Suites.
Just, I mean, do you think that maybe we should be a little bit more conservative and cut that a bit for this budget, just to make sure we're not in negative number by the end of the year?
Or, or we could leave it and, you know, if, if we don't end up collecting that, then it would impact what we might spend those dollars on.
Yeah, but.
But if you have the expenditures in the budget.
But here's, with the hotel motel fund, the, we monitor the balance of the revenue that hits that fund. We don't ever let the expenses exceed the revenues that hit there. So anything, anything that could not be funded, if the revenues aren't coming into the hotel motel fund, the general fund will absorb those costs for the events that we have.
Right.
The fireworks on May.
Yeah.
So we won't ever, we actually reclass, the funds originally hit the general fund and we reclass it over to the hotel motel fund as funds are available.
Yeah, I understand that totally. I just want to make sure that, I mean, if, it's, I have a feeling that it's highly unlikely that we will get to that target revenue, given the circumstances. And so if, you know, now I guess would be the time to, if we wanted to make that adjustment or just leave it as is. That's the only reason I'm bringing that up.
Well, I mean, we could be, you know, 30,000 short on a revenue budget right now.
Right. Yes.
And it's about five, it averages about 5,000 a month for that hotel. The new hotel could actually do better and pull the lead for that one.
Probably will.
So.
Probably will.
Actually even out.
Yeah. And, okay, so that answers my question. I think it will be more than the current hotel.
Well, they budgeted more than the current motel.
Yeah.
They budgeted 109,000.
Yeah.
Let's watch it.
Yeah. And then on the expense side, what is the, I'm assuming that increase is a carryover? The 197? Or, it is? Okay, I just want to be sure. Okay. Okay, thank you.
What's what?
There's current fund balance that will, that's going to roll over to next year and that's to spend down the fund balance.
That's what I thought it was.
Spend on what?
For the public community events that were canceled.
A bigger fireworks show.
There's your 40th anniversary money, or 70th anniversary. Only if we think it will affect beds.
We could do that. Beds and beds. We can, we can.
How much of that is a roll over?
You can have a mattress song.
Have a parade.
Oh, don't go there. I can't believe you just said that.
Any other questions on forty-five or forty-six? All right, forty-seven? That service fund obviously is affected by the passage of propositions A and B, or one and, A and C. Employee benefits fund, just a comment, and then we'll see.
Are you on, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, page forty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you guys know, you remember the, the data that Richard showed you guys the other night about how much less we're spending per employee that had hit at least 30 points or more? We actually have taken that and we're revamping how we might incentivize that to encourage more employees to reach the 30% mark.
Okay.
So we think that that's good, those are good dollars spent. There's maybe a combination of things that we could do. You know, certainly not a significant enough budgetarily to have to make any adjustments here. But could include, could include other things. But we recognize that, that, that is something we really need to get our employees pushing towards. And not, not to do the minimum of 20, but to push towards 30, so.
Makes a difference.
In September, you will get a budget amendment. And we're adding about 500-plus thousand dollars in this year for all the stop loss, the additional expenditures and the stop loss, which offsets. But I mean, you know, we just want to recognize that. So as Richard told you guys the other day, this will be our third straight year for our employees without a premium increase. And we just, extraordinary good news.
It's good.
Good marketing.
Particularly in this market.
Yep.
All right, any questions then on page fifty? Okay, so now, Mayor, we are to the CIP. It is, it is 7:30. Do we want to go ahead and go through the CIP pages? Or is there another preference council may have?
So what we have left is CIP and then decision making?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you all want?
I, I believe we can get through the CIP in probably less than 45 minutes.
Yeah, I'd press forward, I think.
Let's see how far we can get, then we'll make another decision at the end of CIP.
Okay.
We have a high motivation not to come back Tuesday.
All right. Any questions on page fifty or fifty-one? Okay, fifty-two or fifty-three? Fifty-four or fifty-five?
All right, this is where I want to, so I'm the one that asked the question of, do we have the 11 million sources in use as all scheduled out? So what I'm looking for, Gary, or whomever, company, best guess by project, by year, a mapping, a plan. You've done that with the sewer. You know exactly what projects you want to fund, what years. You've laid out, we need $7 million a year in sewer funds. The plan can change, but all we have on this 11 million is a number based on a gross number, based on a PCI. I feel like we need to map this out better.
Yes.
And I didn't expect an answer today from a total mapping standpoint, but I feel like we need to do that.
Yes, once we got your question and answer, we met with staff and we talked about how to grade water and sewer. Because we're just talking about the street component here.
Right.
But you have to look at the infrastructure under the street. So we need to grade the infrastructure under the street so we can identify streets that can just get concrete replacement, curb-to-curb, or concrete and utility replacements. So we started that process today to identify specific projects. If you're talking specifically streets, we, we look at the PCIs are starting.
Right.
And then we look at the cost, it was 4.3 billion dollars a mile to do curb-to-curb residential.
I understand how you came up with the numbers. I just want a plan.
Well, that would be our plan, be the first five streets on the lowest PCI. That's not in the bond election. But we can get a more formal plan.
But, but even the sewer plan includes bond money, so let's make some assumptions and you're not going to get 11 million dollars funding a year out of cash CIP. It's going to be out of bond money.
Or a combination.
Yeah.
So we have the, the projects that didn't make the bond election.
My elbow keeps hitting the button that flips it over.
That little tiny button.
And that little button is like, you know, so small, it's like, I don't know how my elbow's hitting it, but.
So we, we presented way more projects to CIP that didn't pick out a pass.
I know.
And that's our plan. The ones that didn't get passed this bond election are the first ones going to be up to the next bond.
I want a plan. I want a, I want a matrix plan on a piece of paper, subject to change.
Okay.
All right, I know what you're asking for, Mayor. We'll work on that. Okay? Any question on fifty-five? Did we answer the question on CDBG? So we put back in the dollars. Now, the CDBG money, you lock in more because you got to do the public hearings and all that. The list we had, and we could pull that back up if we need to, but the list that we had that makes up the portion of the alleys, do we have that right? That's the easy one for you to change in this meeting.
It makes up the alleys.
It's the complimentary cash to that, right?
Can you put that on full screen?
It doesn't make up the alleys, okay.
No, I'm sorry.
But it makes up the difference.
What were, what were the 40,000 in park improvements again?
That the playgrounds cover it like side and an additional bigger facility in it could win ice.
Yes.
That where? And then the sidewalk is the income-based program we would propose starting October 1?
Right.
Salvation Army, we understand that. Life message, normal type funding. And housing rehab is for Habitat?
That is correct.
Who's speaking? Manal?
Where does it say?
What do you all think?
Where was the screening wall rehabilitation?
Take it in.
Where is the screening wall rehabilitation?
That didn't have anything to do with matching CDBI, CDBG funds.
What's on there for 150?
Yeah, Gary, he's asking about the 150,000 a year that we've got in there for screening walls.
Yeah, so we have.
But it has nothing to do with CDBG. Can we finish the CDBG discussion for a minute? And then we'll go right there.
Are we hap, first off, we've restored the funds. Are we happy with the allocation?
Fine with me.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good?
Yeah.
All right, so those other monies, are, are they coming up here in a minute?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get there soon as we get to that page.
Okay.
Hold your thought, Brownie.
Oh, Lord, I remember.
Write it down, Brownie.
Any, any other questions on fifty-six or fifty-seven?
Fifty-five.
Or the rest of fifty-five?
I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
We're kicking the can down the road so big time on this alley issue, guys. I mean, we're not even coming close to fixing our alley issue.
No.
And it scares the bejeebers out of me.
It's a lot of stuff.
So with that.
And we don't, all we know is how bad it is. We don't really have, we don't have a workable plan. And we're not going to solve a workable plan in this session, but it's really, really scary. And I know how you feel about it, Matt. But it's a big problem.
Well, clearly, you know, we, we got $2 million in the proposed, in the bond election. But again, that, that's not even a drop in the bucket compared to what we need.
It's 150 million.
That's the point you're making, Mayor.
Yeah, I just.
The monies we have is a combination of cash and then bonds is.
There's a lot of things I feel really good about of, of walking away from my term limit. This is one I don't.
Yeah.
I just feel like.
It's, it's one thing if it's even keeping the level, you know, the level of alleys the same, but we're not even doing that.
I mean, that's just.
And so the strategy needs to be discussed.
So we raised the PCI of alleys three points this year.
That's good.
Okay.
We are making progress on that. Streets, streets was flat.
What'd you say?
I said, let's tell that story.
Mr. No Alley.
I hear you.
Yeah, I just, I just, I don't know.
That sounds like another work session.
I don't know. I, I don't know how there's an answer.
It was one of those topics you guys put in your.
But I mean, that, that's a whole nother discussion about how do we attack that? What's the strategy going forward? Because there's that fee that we have right now on the water bill. And does that need to be adjusted, or how does that play into this? And that, that's all bigger discussion, I think, for this topic.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's such a huge number and, and it is a priority. And, and, but it is going to need some strategy.
Well, it's, it's 150 million dollars. It's, that's more than our bonds usually.
Double, triple.
50/50 alley program. I understand.
Really fix your alley program and do it in a timely manner. You have to look at some outside-of-the-box funding strategies. You know, I'd be curious to look at an analysis, not that we don't have enough work to do, but what, what's the average home value and average income value for those neighborhoods that have the lowest PCIs? And then start to look at, you know, is there a neighborhood investment zone that you could create, that you could do a special tax assessment within that area? If you've got a certain number, percentage of homeowners within that area to sign off on to help pay for it. I mean, that's the type of critical outside-the-box thinking. Because we're never going to catch up with it on bonds. We're never going to catch up with the cash CIP.
We're too far behind.
And I don't think this council or any other councils is going to prioritize safety and roads and water and all that, or realities. And I'll keep preaching that. I would be all for looking into a situation like that where we prioritize our bond funding for the lowest income areas and fix those alleys first based on a certain PCI. And look at some alternative that is closer to a 50/50, where there's actual tax dollars that are coming from those homeowners that are in those areas that are going to benefit from that the most to help pay for that. And if there's a model out there that's aligned, that aligns in that way, one way or another, I'd be all open for it. But I'll never be one to push for more CIP dollars or more bond dollars to go straight to alleys. It's just too many other needs that we have. But you're exactly right. I mean, is there a 50/50 program or is there a way that you can add that? I mean, because if I lived in an area and I had a bad alley, put two cents extra on my tax roll for the next five years or the next two years, or however it is, to fix my stinking alley, I'd be all for that.
Yep.
Well, that's one of those things you have to go out to the community.
Investing infrastructure in their development, in their home, and do this. And it's going to raise their property values, it's going to raise the sellability of their homes. And I think it's an easy program to sell. Now, you get below a certain threshold of your average median income, and that's where we spend our bond dollars. You subsidize the lowest and you find ways to have the highest to help pay for those improvements because they get the biggest deal, they get the biggest assessment from it. So if that is a strategy session, I'd love to be a part of it and talk to it and love to entertain any ideas that are out there. Those are just my kind of two cents on that.
Yep.
Which is why we need more details from, from Gary to be able to make those kinds of assessments.
Yes, in a work session.
I mean, we need a pace program for athletes.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, but really, that's what it's going to take. It's going to take something like that outside-of-the-box thinking. We have neighborhoods in here that I'm sure would sign off on that to get their alleys fixed. And there's others that wouldn't because of that AMI. And that's where we invest our, our bond strategy.
No, I think a lot of, I think it's out-of-the-box thinking like that is going to need to be the way that we approach this. I like that a lot.
Dr. Colin Allred, get us on infrastructure.
That's not going to fund all alleys.
No.
Never know. The train's already out.
If you don't ask, it sure won't.
It's already, it's already past that point.
All right, well, I just, it's one thing I just don't feel good about that we haven't addressed in the last decade.
All right. Any questions on fifty-eight or fifty-nine? This is where we have the enterprise program. All right, then what we'll do, guys, let's go to the very last tab, capital improvements program. That's where we have specific programs. That's going to be page 127. And so the question then becomes is, I know some of this is bond funds and, and those are pretty much dust and stone. But, and we just talked about CDBG, so I think we've got that out of the way. Is there anything on this list you have a question about? Or are you, because I know there was some, I can't remember who it was. Somebody was asking, you know, one program had a dip in funding. We've answered that one. In some years, you're going to see that go right back up. Are there any questions you guys have on pages? We'll start with 127.
What was your screening wall question, Brown?
Yeah, screening, I was just, I see you got 150,000 a year. I was wondering, what screening walls are we repairing?
So the city has screening walls that we're responsible for repairing. We had a discussion about this in a past work session. The way I was, had the program, it was repair and replace walls. At that first session, I was told we had to plan and enhance screening walls as well. So that's what we're working on now. So that's to replace screening walls that have failed and enhance the areas well, like shrubbery or just to make a beautification of it, so.
I guess my whole question is leaning around a screening wall on Dalrock.
So I have to look at our map to see which ones are, which one are homeowner associations.
It's just, if you drive by there, you see this, yeah, I don't know what, where the tires are, whose it is. But if you drive by there, the screening wall is leaning out towards Dalrock and it looks like it's about to fall.
Yeah, that's definitely.
It's got two befores stuck on it and they're rotted and so.
So I'll get with Manal and we'll work together and address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on page 127? I'll bring up one. Today, we got a email from Rockwall County. And they have put $6 million on the November bond election for Dalrock Road expansion.
Oh.
So we asked for that.
Wow.
We estimated it would be almost 12 to 13 million dollars. And so they basically are agreeing to fund half of it, which is essentially the Rockwall County portion of Dalrock Road. So in my mind, what happens now, if the election is successful in November and is approved, then that really puts an impetus on us to, through bonds, to fund the other half to do the Dallas County portion of Rockwall, or excuse me, Dalrock, and get that in the, in a future funding. So it's not obviously in here yet because we didn't know if it would make the list. I'm just telling you, it did make the list.
We could have a five, a five-lane road.
Can you have a what?
We can have a five-lane road, right? Isn't it, you said they're expanding it to what? Just three lanes or?
I think it's, isn't it two, two on each, one on each side?
It'd be three each, yeah, six lanes.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Ha, ha, ha.
Yeah, because we're always blamed for paying attention to Dallas and not Rockwall.
Interesting.
We can have an HOV lane.
Take care of all those.
Do one side, tell Ziegels, come look at this.
Well, I didn't mean to distract us, but that's good news.
It is good.
I just wanted to share that with you. I just wanted to share that with you. I was going to do it by email, but since we have this opportunity. All right, page 128. Are there any questions about our sewer project?
I'm on page 127 still.
Okay.
So, we're back in allocating $50,000 to the arts program again.
Ten of which is for maintenance.
Right. So $40,000, so kind of in the same vein of what I heard last night. I, I really want council to, to be a part of that decision-making because I feel like we've put in art projects in the city without council's approval.
Yep. I agree with that.
And that, that can't continue.
I agree with that.
So what Laura is also working on is a master, arts masterclass. That would be a cohesive. Do you want to talk a little bit about that? That's one of the things that she's kind of started kicking off with Arts and Humanities Commission.
Yeah, so when, when we met with you guys in the work session, you had tasked the council with a maintenance program. And so, that and then with the art that's being, wanted to be selected at fire station number two, we got into kind of a discussion on why are we using Knobleaf again? Do we want to look at other things? And the fire chief, it kind of wanted something a little more representational and less stylistic. So what I did was I had reached out to some neighboring cities, talking to them about, what do you, how do you select things? How do you select artists? How do you select art? So we're working with neighboring cities and their process as far as putting out a call to artists and then getting proposals from them, then coming to council with those style proposals and saying, "Okay, we have these artists and they want to do something that looks like this." Or we have an artist who wants to do something like this or like this, so that there's options. And then pricing, and it's not just the process that we've had in the past.
Thank you.
I like that.
Yeah, definitely, you know, Laura, one thing that we need to include in that is what it costs to maintain.
Yes.
Whatever, because man, that is really starting to make an impact on the budget for arts and humanities.
And I think that needs to, to be in the decision-making process.
For sure.
So that we don't get art that's expensive to maintain.
Yes. There needs to be some standards up.
Okay. 128.
Look at the page.
Okay, 128.
Are you texting him again?
I just texted him. He ended up with Big Brother that twice, so. I did it a long time ago. He just saw it. And you got busted because you know high things very well, dude.
It's about three shades of red right there.
You're turning red.
No, no.
You're going to start crying?
It's a red bone. That's what it is. That's all. Okay, page 128.
I'll need you to do more sneaking.
I want to see that, huh? I'm going to have to start watching this show.
You can't work in the finance department if you don't watch it.
I've never seen this.
Oh, my gosh. So addicted we record them all.
Oh, my gosh. I'll have to go back and watch it. All right, we done?
Yes, and, um, so, um, one last thing I would like to do for tonight at least, and of course, we can do whatever council wants to do. Were there any questions about the responses? Some of them we got yesterday, and I know you only saw the answers today. If you're comfortable with that, that's fine. If you want to wait till next Tuesday. What I would like to see us do for next Tuesday is, if we can't do it tonight, is do, is consider wrap-up and then work on the city councils to your work plan. Those were some things I'd still like us to do. Well, if y'all don't want to, I mean, but I just, you know.
Yeah, I just was hoping we could get it done tonight.
Uh, decision-making?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it. All right, let's go. All right.
I don't think it'll take that long.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so then we need a starting point, council. So where would you like to start with recapping? Can you pull up the, oh, okay, so Robert came prepared. We have the spreadsheet that as we start adding and making changes, that he can make an adjustment. And then on the screen, and you can see how many more dollars are still left. So as y'all know-
Where's the beginning point?
Where's our starting point?
You have $45,000 in one-time funds, $350,000 in ongoing funds. We removed Kids Kingdom from the proposed budget of the funding for '21.
Oh, gotcha.
So you have another $60,000 to spend.
So $85,000 on one-time things.
$350 of ongoing when you make decisions. I can put them in either and we'll track down.
Cool, cool.
All right, so.
I absolutely, positively believe we have to fund another detention officer.
I agree. That's one of my, on my list.
Yeah, I, I, I-
Yeah, let, let alone.
Well, let's just do two.
But yeah, I agree.
What's it eat?
Do you support that, Chief?
Um, I, I do. I feel like a couple of things want to communicate when we talked about it earlier. First thing I want everybody to know is we are staffing at two all the time. We always staff at two, okay? So we're doing that now with some creative scheduling and with some overtime. So it's hurting our overtime budget, but, um, so right now, our authorized strength is 10. One vacancy, get oral boards today, should be able to fill that vacancy in the next few weeks. So 10 gives you two and a half per shift if you have four shifts. So, so getting to two per shift is not that, that difficult for full-time staff.
10 plus two supervisors or?
And including the two supervisors. Because right now, the supervisors have a dual role. So long-term, ideally, what we'd like to get, you know, build-out kind of stuff, would be 14, which would give you three per shift plus the two supervisors. So, um, right now, we feel like we could, we could grow into that without sacrificing safety, right? Because that's the, the main goal is, is inmate safety. So that having been said, and I might be speaking out of school a little bit here, but-
Remember, you have to report what you say to the chief.
Acting chief, acting chief. We're a very young department, especially in the control division. And the fear is that if, if we don't sufficiently fund salaries, that we will lose people. The way it works in policing is your first three to five years or when you're really highly mobile, you're, you're an experienced officer, but you don't have a lot of skin in the game. You haven't promoted. You haven't been here long enough to really have a strong allegiance to the organization. So there's really no penalty to move into another department that'll give you $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 more a year. And I'm saying all this to say that we think we can staff the detention center sufficiently for safety with the one that we asked for. Two, that would be better. But given the choice between increasing salaries for our employees and getting the two, we, as an organization, we would prefer to fund the salaries.
Thank you.
Probably more than you wanted to hear, but-
No, it's just, it's not, it's not apples to apples from a dollar standpoint, but we hear you.
Or we can jam it down his throat and give him one more.
The, the problem is, the problem is that if we get to the zero variant, we've just completely depleted our ongoing fund right there. Gone.
Right, so-
Do you have to do all?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Do you have to do all or nothing?
Right, that's what I was going to ask.
Well, that, that's, that's, that's where we get, that's where we get into some issues.
Sausage.
Not really.
Well, sausage maker.
Not really. I mean, right now, we're .95 off, so we're .5 off and we partially fund it. It gets you closer.
Maybe, yeah. Yes.
She said that partially across the board.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant-
Across the board.
I thought you meant only giving Pete police a raise and not the other two. I'm like, yeah, that won't work.
That's what I always propose.
That won't work.
No, no.
My question for Chief on that, I completely hear, hear what you're saying, is we, where you look at what other departments are offering, I don't think we could put, not give anybody else a raise and put all that raise to our police. And I still don't think we'd, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we'd still be competitive with Plano and McKinney and some of these.
I think, I think you're right, and I don't think we ever will be, and I don't think officers expect it.
So that's where I'm trying to find that balance. Because you can throw everything to money, we're still not going to be able to outdo those. So there's other things that we have to look at. You know, to me, showing that we're giving them some extra support, like if we're able to put a detention officer there, so maybe now we're not having to rely on a patrol officer to fill in on another day. Which they probably don't want to do. You know, there's those types of morale things. It's really pushing for a new building for you. You know, this is going to be a huge morale boost for this building. I walk through it, I have a morale boost just walking through this building. It's really pushing this facility forward, and that's going to be a huge morale boost. They know we're pushing towards that and funding that. And so I completely hear with you, but I kind of disagree just because I think we're going to give them a raise and we're going to give them a raise more than anybody else in the city, even the, if I read that right. I think you're three, you're higher than the other departments. And yes, I would like-
Because, because the gap to the median is great.
Yes.
Right, because the gap to the median is great. You're correct. But knowing that we can't get there, is your, is your recommendation still the same? That you think that just a little bit more money is even, is still better than being able to maybe offload some of that other duties by being able to provide a different, another person?
So I absolutely hear what you're saying. And, you know, we, Chief Dr. and I, in the year and a half that we've been running the department, have really emphasized the culture. And we want people to stay because they like working there, they think they're valued and, and like the culture. And I think we've gone a long way towards establishing that culture. You know, when you go to management schools, they'll tell you that salary is never a satisfier, but it can dissatisfier, right? So you can never give somebody enough money to be happy. But if they don't feel like they're, they're getting what they're worth, then they'll be dissatisfied. Like I said, we're so young. My fear is if you lose somebody, if you lose, let's say you give us three new officers, but the raise isn't perceived as being good enough. Then let's say three officers leave to go to another department. We, right away, you lost a year. If you hire somebody new, if you send them to the academy, if you send them to field training, it's a year before they're a fully functioning individual unit, right? That you've had to pay for them in equipment and things like that. So it's not like hiring, you know, other types of employees. There's a huge gap from hiring to when they actually are productive. So that, that's what we're trying to avoid. So I guess all that to say, retention is much cheaper than replacement.
So when I asked this question last year, the budget, the chief, he's not here, so I'm going to ask it to you.
I got it.
Better get the same master.
Said, would you rather, would, would your officers rather have four more officers, which is in the budget right now, or a higher pay raise?
So, so there's a balance, right? Everything's a balance, like you just said. And we need to start preparing for Sapphire Bay, right? And we need to start preparing for a different type of policing down there. Because right now, we're really not all that clear on what the mix is going to be. What's going to be residential? What's going to be commercial? What's going to be bars? What's going to be restaurants, you know? The way we, we schedule and staff that area is very much dependent on how it builds out and what it ends up being. But regardless, we're cognizant of the fact that that is going to be an increased drain on resources. We need to start ramping up. And we have a five-year plan. It averages about four officers per year, plus some supervisors in the later years of the plan to get to where we need to be, not only for Sapphire Bay, but for, to get to build up, right? For, for the entire city. So where we're at right now is we feel like the four officers is, and, and, and the salary increases is, is a good balance.
I stand to answer a gay watch here, so. I think it's a good plan, and I agree with you 100%. I wish we could compete with some of those other cities. I just, I also see that we have a real need there in safety across all of our cities. It's pretty important too, so, but thank you for answering.
Let me make one other comment about pay. There are people in the organization dissatisfied about pay because we're always going to be a year behind.
Yep.
And so, just, just to know that, it's there. I mean, and it's real to some of these employees.
Yep.
Most of the employees I have talked to, the great majority, appreciate even what we're proposing to do. What I'm, what I just want to kind of keep in your mind is that I think they would appreciate pushing even further. And I think, you know, going back, and I, and I know the comment you were making, Matt, but, you know, I, I certainly would not want to push one department further than another, you know.
I, I, I kind of, I like the getting to the .5 on, across the board. And then you're still, you're still, you're still able to do more things in the one-time fund. But I think that's the best we can do.
Well-
So that due to us, maybe-
I mean, I, I heard Chief saying he can manage the detention and won't go below two.
I mean, we're doing that now.
Yeah.
Well, it's got to continue. So, you know, maybe we come off the detention officer for right now. There's other big needs too. I'm, I, I am, I guess the other thing I worry about that we haven't done is this city needs an internal auditor. Should have funded this several years ago, and that really bothers me too. But I also think this city needs a diversity coordinator desperately. But I, I mean, I, I would put fire inspector permanent position as the next choice. I mean, it's, we already got $30,000 in the budget.
Yeah, I think that's another, that's $93,000 additional.
How much additional?
93.
So we would only have to make up though, everything minus the 30.
Take the 30 away from that.
No, no, that's already discounting 30.
What, what is the total?
The total's 123, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And one, and one-time chief or in recurring?
Recurring.
Recurring is a lot.
Yeah, recurring. Pardon me?
One-time is 33, and recurring is 90.
So one-time would be 33 and recurring would be 60?
90.
Recurring is 90, one-time is 33.
And ongoing equipment we have. We also had ongoing equipment as another ADI.
Oh, because of the enterprise program?
Probably.
Probably.
Yes. I think that's-
Y'all want to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, let's try it.
Let's do it.
Let's look it up there.
How conservative, conservative were you on sales tax again, remind me?
Pretty conservative.
So, probably about $180,000 to $200,000, conservative, honestly.
Potentially, we could look at mid-year and see how sales tax are doing and come back and look at that additional detention officer.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, that's what I was going to suggest too, because I think the probability of us doing a mid-year budget adjustment is pretty high again.
Yeah. I'd say that's the new standard.
Hey, where's your chart?
I, so, Chief, we're, we're in the process of hiring for the detention officer that retired.
Actually, for resignation, we have.
Oh, resignation, okay.
Oh, okay.
Kathy, you're probably going to need those other detention officers by the time Sapphire Bay comes online, right?
Yes, well-
It's kind of like every, every year, this needs to be brought up.
Until we get to, until we get to the 14.
Before we start putting people to jail from Sapphire Bay.
Yeah, hopefully. Another question, how's that working out with SAXI and the additional officer that we hired?
The volume of prisoners that they're bringing over is actually lower than what was originally anticipated. So the city is making out a pretty long, because they're staffing a person full-time.
Yeah.
And, and really, the additional work that comes with that contract is less than 1STV.
Okay, good, good leader.
That's why I said 60, and everybody said no.
What'd you say?
So, can we, um-
But Chief told me no when I did that, Robert, so just give me a minute. Why is it, why can't we subtract that 30?
You can.
Okay, you told me no a minute ago.
I thought because you-
That's why I said 60.
I thought you were going to use the 30 you already had for the one-time call.
He was saying, "You know."
Oh.
K-N-O-W, yes.
I heard you.
Yes. You missed a view.
It's my fault.
She did it. She touched the bat.
You know.
Hide the patch.
Can you put the, can you just, just for, just to see how the numbers work out in the ongoing? Could you put the 175 for the .5 variant for the salary adjustment?
If we do that, that's the fire inspector? If we do that, do we give additional funding by taking the contract money back out now?
We did that on the ongoing.
That ship sailed 10 minutes ago.
Well, I thought it would be on the other side with the six feet over there, because that's when we got it.
No, 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 that, that's- No, 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 that, that's-
We're going to go to 30 on the budget.
Yeah, that was, I should not have said that. Maybe it confused everybody.
Robert, we add another point five to compensation, should be around 175, 180,000.
Yeah.
And I can't remember how much it ever gets on file.
I can drag one.
15%.
It's going to be 35.
Utility fund.
That 153.
Okay, there you go.
The 153.
Okay.
And then put what it's for.
Well, we've got to fund the other stuff too. Is there available funds in the other fund for that?
Yeah, so utility fund, yeah, I don't think there, we, we would have extra funds.
You wouldn't have a problem there?
No, we wouldn't. And it's a much smaller pa, uh, smaller place.
Is there a natural cutoff, Richard? If, if we can't do the whole 350, is there a natural cutoff?
So every, it's, it's a twofold calculation. So you have to calculate the new variance at as close to point five as possible without going into the hundreds of a percentage of adjustment, unless you want to go in the hundreds. So right now, I'm doing point six, point seven. To get it exactly on five, you'd have to go into the hundreds place on each one of those factors.
That's not my question. Is there a natural cutoff? We just threw out point five. Is there a better natural cutoff?
I would have to calculate it, but I can get as close as point five or below.
So this would actually bring us just below point five?
That's correct. I'll get as close below it as possible.
Point four-two, point four-three.
Correct.
If we did this.
350 or?
No.
No, 153.
Oh, okay. 153.
That's why we ended up on point nine.
I've heard so many numbers, I can't say that.
Get to an exact increment.
That's the general function.
Just asking, is there a better way to do it?
Not an easier way.
He says 153.
Not while we're here, okay. So what else are we looking at? Or how much left? Do we have?
I just did the 350.
I don't think we know that yet.
Why is there a difference between the two? I'm so confused by what they have up there.
I-
Why is there two different lines?
So this is what's currently, this is what's available, and that's how we would use it.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
It's just, so we have 85 available in one-time funds, we have 380 in ongoing. We've currently proposed-
Oh, gotcha, I got it.
And then you got that to the right, where you have the running total. So you currently have 52,000 in remaining one-time.
Yep.
And some numbers in ongoing that you can't see.
Yeah, you can't see.
Looking at the 99.
Right, that's right.
Oh, okay. So we have about 50 left in one-time. And 125 from-
What are you hiding from me?
The left is what we're taking out of the proposed budget, so clearing up the resources that we're using them on the right.
What's the current MO that we have in training?
It's to keep our numbers. Right, we know what's coming out and what's going back in.
Well, I, I would propose that we put up there a detention officer for six months in, for half of the salary.
So 54,000.
So that we have a placeholder out there, and we promise we will discuss it with the Chief when we get closer to that time period.
27, 450. And I think, I'm going to throw this out.
I mean, throw the whole annual salary in there so we can fund it the following year, but we, let's like hold off on the decision.
But know that it's going to be half.
Six months. What do you think?
Oh, throw the whole salary in there, okay.
What do y'all think?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you don't want half the salary in ongoing because it screws us up next year.
It does, yeah.
Right.
So throw, throw the full in ongoing, but let's put a placeholder for a future decision. Chief?
Hey, look, there's just enough for a downtown manager.
Or a diversity coordinator, or an internal auditor. You're really going to prioritize a downtown manager over an internal auditor?
Yes.
I got boxing gloves in my car.
I think we should put in the internal auditor.
Wait, wait till there's a problem down the road and, um-
Oh, man, that's tough.
I have a question for one-time. Gary, you keep asking for a custodian, right?
Yeah, so I have a one-time person we want to make full-time, so it's happening.
Why can't we, why can't we contract that?
So we did some analysis, and we looked at contracting, first one, our salaries for his benefits, and it's probably, it's about the same money. But our, our custodians don't just do custodial work, they do other work. So it comes down to service level, do we want them to keep doing the dishwasher? Do we want to keep buying drinks, or you just wanted to do cleaning? So it comes down to what, what service level do we want?
I need my Pepsi.
So we have the training chief, but do we have the training budget to support the program?
34,000.
And you said that we have one of the lowest per firefighter training dollars.
22,000 gives us up there.
I think, yeah, I think, um-
I think during the budget process, we were asking for a little bit lower than that, and Brian asked for what it probably gives for media, and it wasn't.
Because we're like bottom two in spending for training across the metroplex.
I wanted to give-
21,000.
Yeah, I wanted to give some time into the training officer before worrying about increasing the training budget.
Make it full-time.
Make it full-time.
21,362.
I think we should go with that.
I would also like to propose that we-
But if we're already one of the lowest, sorry.
I'd like to propose that we put an internal auditor from a recurring fund standpoint, and that we put some one-time money upfront to get a audit, a plan developed by a professional firm on the front end.
What was that, $66,000 ongoing?
It was 67, but I think we also have some upfront costs if we're going to do this to develop an audit plan. We've got to have a, you know, either you can pay 100, 120,000 a year for an internal auditor that can do it all, or you can pay a one-time fee upfront to get an audit plan put together by, you know, contract labor, and then you can hire someone that can manage the plan. That's my proposal.
Hello, Sam?
I don't have any problem funding the custodial.
We only have 72 left, so that would take that out, unless we move the detention officer to half-time, because you're not going to hire it until mid-year.
Yeah.
And then you could squeeze that other half in to make that person full-time, and you're not even going to look at the detention officer until mid-year anyway.
Well, you don't need more than 70,000 recurring if y'all agree to that proposal. You need some one-time money.
For the auditor, right?
It's 67 ongoing.
Looks like, am I, is that correct, that the remaining is 72, 902 with what's in there right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then that would knock that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, and then, but change the numbers on the detention officer and make that person full-time instead of half-time.
Mean half-time instead of full-time.
Half-time instead of full-time.
Half-year, not half-time.
Yeah, half-year.
Half-year.
Half-year for detention.
Right.
And make half-time.
You said, huh?
I said half-time, make half-time person full-time.
Yeah. But you said detention officer. Half-year.
Did I say half-time?
There's a lot of halves going on here.
It's okay. All right, so what do y'all, what do y'all think of this proposal?
Changing.
Y'all, you'll find that other half next year. Change the ongoing detention officer to six months. Is that already six months?
No.
No, that's full for a year.
That's full.
That's full.
Let me just wipe that out real quick.
Put in full-time custodial. Yeah.
It's 21, 362. 21, 362.
21, 362.
Can we finance, give me the number?
Excuse us. I like this guy.
What'd he say?
Park town full-time?
Yeah, park town full-time.
Oh, it's smarty.
I think that's what we said.
I believe it was too.
We have to make sure.
I believe that's what he said.
That's what he said.
Internal auditor. Where did I get my number? From them.
Internal auditor. I'm just going to put it on the board, 67. And then like audit plan for one-time, what do you think, 30?
I was going to say 30.
You going down?
Yeah.
Oh, it's one-time.
Well, it looks like finance team got, or the finance committee got-
That is your butt on the line there, not finance.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Not having an internal auditor in this city this big is-
I agree, we need one. It's definitely-
So based on all that, we're down to 18, 819? I am going to point this out, is when we go back through the work plan, you could identify some things that we need dollars for.
All right, let's go right now. Let's look.
Okay.
I think detention officers were in that work plan.
Save that, let's park it.
They were.
And then let's pull back up the, there was a slide, I think we put that slide in here towards the bottom. Keep going, keep going, keep going, that one, there you go.
There we go, I have it.
And then there's another slide that we, somewhere where we know how much each one of those, or we think we know how much they may cost. I think I have it in my-
Is it in there? I don't think it is.
Play.
No, it's not.
Um, we, I know it's hard to see, we took a stab at trying to estimate some of the dollars that it might take for some of these programs. You know, I'll just take one. Miller Road Bridge, you know, that's building a funding coalition of multiple agencies to try to do a project that quite frankly, COG or Tech Dot won't even support until after the I-30 improvements are in, and they see, and they see what is going to change the-
That's officially?
Yes, we were told that by Michael Morris, Tammy and I were. So-
Dang.
And he controls everything.
I know, he's king of the transportation.
Getting loose on that bridge for anything to do-
So, but my point is, you could start in the next couple of years working on the funding coalition, but you're going to get stymied at some point, because without Michael's help, quite frankly, that project won't happen for years.
Yep.
And that's even if it does anyway. Some of the other stuff, staff is already working on, like the, what was it, the, what was the one we're doing on the?
What are you looking for?
The park dedication ordinance, we're already working on that. So staff's already determined to do that one. The generators at the very bottom are already funded through the ARCA fund. So I'm just saying that there's already things that are in, in there to do. What I'm more interested in, in this discussion, is there, if there are any of these programs that you want us to work on that's not in the current budget, that we may need help with some funding on. A long-term strategy for Waterview Golf Course, Matt, this is where you can weigh in, you know, is it, is it, is the desire to fund, to do, to do an annual allotment, which we already have an allotment for maintenance in the fund, but is, is it to build a funding mechanism, or is it only to develop a strategy for preparing for the future?
To me, I look at it as a strategy to prepare for the future. That should drive what future dollars we may need to start putting away to do that.
Yep. So for this year, you wouldn't necessarily need extra dollars for funding, but if the strategy develops, you need for it, then maybe in future years, we'd start to fund it.
Yeah, I would say maybe there might be some funding, but I think some of that would have to be contracted out, whether it was Sandy or another firm, because there's going to be some pretty hefty financial, probably work that's going to need to be done to help with that. So it would, there would probably be some contracts.
So Matt, is that different than the capital maintenance plan we just put together that outlines? What Sandy has done is take that one more step and figure out in what year each of those projects might happen.
That's, that's a good plan, and that helps us set up to, you know, we need a, guess what, put it as potential exit strategy at some point if they got to that point.
That is that first call.
What do we need to do to prepare for an exit strategy? Yeah, but that's, that might be 250,000, that might be that number, but we don't know until we have somebody that kind of, I think, does more analysis on it.
I have some of it from Sandy as just part of his general work for us, exactly what account, what that 250 is.
Well, we may need-
But to your point, we need to build the strategy, and it may identify future, future funding needs. Then we start working how to get that in the budget.
Right, you know, if, if we say a long-term strategy for us is to eventually take this over, what are the steps that we need to take, both internally and externally with Merritt Golf, our partner, to move towards that?
Okay.
And what are those investments?
So we might not-
Next thing, we need to have put aside, that takes into consideration the debt load and what future management costs might be, and all of that, that's a pretty detailed analysis.
So we may not need funds this year to do that one. North Shore Marketing, Jim and Libby have identified maybe what a boost would do in that. Again-
A lot of activity right there right now.
I know, I know.
Yeah. I have a question about Cole House.
Raymond, we're on North Shore, he's still talking.
Are we working down the list?
Yeah, but he's still, that's something on North Shore.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You'll have to remember.
Got it.
I was just going to say, again, we could do some analysis to develop a plan, but Jim and Libby seem to think that for an additional $60,000, they could really make a significant boost to it. And so that might be a possibility that would include funding.
We'll see.
We have a gap on Merritt Road Interconnector.
Hang on, I'm North Shore. There's a lot of activity going on in North Shore right now, so I would like to see how that pans out before we start spending a bunch of money on a marketing plan.
I agree.
You agree with that, Living?
Yep.
Yep, I do.
I'd rather, if we're going to spend that money, I'd rather do it on Main Street downtown than North Shore, but that's later on.
Merritt Road Interconnector, obviously is, we've identified a possible funding gap. That would have to be solved for, through Barnes. Given the fact that we have two, two sources of grant funding, Dallas County and COG, this is one, we have to work on this plan, even though, even though closing that funding gap may still be sometime in the future. We're past the sixty percent mark, Gary?
Yes.
For designs. Miller, we kinda touched on.
Nice.
Downtown manager. I mean, this is to identify what possibly it would cost. If that's something we wanna say we're gonna do, we gotta go back and revisit that other list.
Is coil on here later?
It is.
Okay.
More investment in public safety, I think that's very nebulous, but.
It is.
You know, but if you guys want us to devote making a plan, maybe what I would suggest is something similar to what the Fire Master Plan just did.
Yep.
And maybe we do one for police.
I think actually that would be a really good thing if we did the same type of thing for PD, because there's so many variables there that we, we just don't know. And I think if they had a master plan, it would really help us to be able to look into the future and figure out what's what.
Okay, Safar Bay, obviously, we're moving towards that. I think that's one we're working on regardless. The street light retrofit program, here's the bottom line on that. If Encore replaces these lights when there is, when the light has to be replaced, it does not cost us anything out of pocket.
But it's ugly.
If we were to change it, we have to pay for it. So we've talked about the possibility, like downtown, we might see the need for a specific district where we might want that all of them changed out at one time. But do we really care about, you know, this Collector Road and that whatever road and, you know, down Trady or down, you know, something else? Do we really care if one's gonna, if they're gonna look a little different for a while until they're all replaced?
Yeah. I, I would say no, other than the major thoroughfares like Rowlett Road and Dal Rock and.
They use taxpayer money to fund it all upfront when Encore's gonna fund it over time.
That's not, no, it's, there's a big difference there because you have, it, first off, it changes the nightlife of the city completely. You have orange, white, orange, white, orange, white.
Or purple.
Or purple. There's actually purple. So that's, that's the question of what do we want our city to look like over time at night? That's really where I'm going at there.
I'd rather have a detention officer that'll like.
Me too.
I, I'm just saying that that's what it's going to look like. It's, that's up to us if that's, if we're okay with that, or if we're not okay with that.
If we're gonna change any lights, we do it downtown. Any other place, just let it grow.
I like the idea Brian had, changing everything downtown or make it all look alike.
Well, I, I think you almost have to do that, because you don't want a mix match in.
Not downtown, but I'm not worried about that.
Particularly where you have your decorative lights and stuff. We already are ready to do that one.
What'd you say?
We're already ready to do that one.
That one what?
I'm sorry, downtown.
Yeah, you know.
One ninety to Rowlett Road to Martin, just past the railroad tracks. It's all our, it's all.
I already knew about that. I'm just talking about our major thoroughfares. I understand that the funding is not there, I understand that. I'm just saying that's a decision that we have to determine if we're letting, you know, wanting to have orange, white, orange, white, or.
Can we see?
All right, we can arm wrestle forward, or we can.
Take it out of land acquisition, take sixty six thousand out of land acquisition fund and.
So Brian, that number reflects Rowlett Road from end to end, that, that one.
That one line.
I'm sorry?
That one line there is Rowlett Road from end to end, just for discussion purposes. Wanted you to know what it costs for.
Yeah, you start adding Dal Rock and everything else.
Well, Dal Rock's already being done because the sewer, the water line is going through.
We still gotta come up with seven million dollars to do it.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions then? What about the Highway sixty-six landscape and entry walls?
I thought we were funding that already.
I thought that was already. Yeah, and I wanted to ask about that because we put forty, I think we put forty?
Five. So we did fifty thousand in ongoing maintenance to do the contractor, and we did five thousand in plant replacement.
Okay, this just identified the cost, not necessarily additional cost on top of it.
No, that's additional cost on top of it.
Okay, this would be.
Last year, so we did five thousand in product replacement, plant replacement, and an additional fifty thousand in contractor maintenance for those medians. Yes?
I remember forty thousand for plant replacement.
No, I only remember five.
It was only five for sure. I verified that to make sure. It was only five for sure.
But with all that said, all that money that we're spending hasn't resulted into almost anything except more dead plants and more weeds, so.
Yeah, so I think the question there that I had for Angie, and she's working on, I assume, is the, and for Erin, is how our irrigation system is working, because, you know, there's some areas where everything's nicely filled in and the plants are healthy, and then we have other areas that are really dry and weedy, and we have dead plants. So I'm assuming we've got an irrigation problem.
So that's something the guys are working on. They are working very closely with contractor that we are having a lot of problems with. Purchasing is now involved, the city attorney's now involved, so we are working through that issue. They have had major staffing issues. Every landscape company in the country has had major staffing issues. We're a result of that, right? So when we hire them to come in, we have issues with them. So they are working through that and working, you know, to make sure all those irrigation systems. I think what you see is they get to a certain point, they start back over. So it's, it's getting them all the way down it. So some of them look really good because they're getting a ton of attention, or some of the other ones aren't getting as much attention, so.
So, so have we spent the funding that we allocated?
Not all of it. It's, it rolls into our annual contract as an arm of that. There is a good potential, we will go back to bid October one for another half a year with a potentially different contractor. So Erin is working through, Erin and purchasing and David Berman are working through that now. It's been.
Yes, I think.
High air would be great.
I think to their point, you know, we don't wanna keep throwing, we don't wanna throw good money.
Which is why we haven't done any of the plannings, because there is absolutely no reason to do those until we have that contractor in a place that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
So I think we revisit this because we don't know how much money we have left in.
Well, we shouldn't be spending a hundred thousand on a, on one median.
What's that?
I said, we probably shouldn't be spending a hundred thousand on one median either.
But if we're gonna do a mid-year budget, and by the time we get to that point, they will have already hired someone new.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can reevaluate whether there's need to be any more money to that.
Figure it out, but, I mean, that's a, that's a two point one million dollar project, so, you know, I don't have a problem putting fifty thousand dollars into, to save that kind of investment, but it, it just has to work when we do it.
Which is why they have not done some of the things that are funded, because there's no reason to plant new plants and then them not survive.
Okay, good deal. So. That's why I was asking.
All right, capacity at the animal shelter obviously would involve a bond either to build a new building or expand. This may be where, you know, we could look to some grant dollars.
Who just sneezed?
Nobody.
Um.
Let's go, vaccinated.
Investing in emergency management planning, this is to make our, you know, we already have some allotment for that through Hannah and Ed, but I think this was the idea behind making a more robust training program.
I think it's for a functional exercise.
Yeah, in other words.
All the overtime is included in a functional exercise.
But it's ongoing.
Just don't let it.
Well, I think that helps with that, but it's, every time they do a functional exercise, it's thirty grand in one hit. So it, it eliminates the rest of their budget.
It'd be more than just a functional exercise. We figured it'd be more than just a functional exercise. Other term you just.
Well, you're behind the wall. He's back there, it's back there.
Just don't let Ed.
He's trying not to be seen.
He's giving me the eye. I'm not here, I'm not here.
He was supposed, he was supposed to update me on something tonight, that's why I asked.
Oh. He's hiding.
Point pay, we've already talked about tonight, more downtown events.
I say bigger fireworks. I'm joking, I'm joking.
I say you have to have a downtown manager to manage more downtown events.
We talked about, plan and implement new facility plan, obviously that's one that's gonna, that we're working on regardless. Public boat ramp. We are still trying to solve with the Marina, whether or not we do one offsite or onsite, and there are a lot of ancillary issues regarding that. So we are still trying to solve for it. Significant investment in Coal House, I mean, you can see what that might take. The asphalt road improvement.
I have a question for that. So I didn't realize that we had foundation issues at Coal House. That kinda changes the way I'm thinking about, you know, the improvements there, and I know that any improvements that we do there should be incremental. I do think there are grant opportunities that we can get. There is some interest from the public in doing a historical society. I think that can probably pull in some grant money or some foundation money with that. It, it can't be, there's, there's some new historical designations that we can possibly do based on the eighty-seventh legislature that, that gives some new opportunities there. But, you know, my point is, is that, you know, it's not gonna be a one-time three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar investment, we all know that. But if there are foundation issues, I think that we consider funding that. I don't know if you know how much work needs to be done on the foundation, but I don't see much reason to do stuff with the porch and the painting on the inside and all that, because that's all gonna have to be redone.
And there are some other significant issues that I don't think is, are on that slide, like, you know, we will likely never be able to use the upstairs. It makes the facility not ADA accessible, but we do need to put an air conditioning unit up there, which helps reduce the moisture in the entire house. So that is a significant investment that will make a huge impact on the facility.
Yeah.
I don't know right off the top of my head what the foundation work is. It's probably gonna be forty or fifty thousand dollars, because that tends to be kind of across the board, what it is anytime you do foundation work to something, you know, the cabinets, the ceiling repairs, the foundation issues.
Let me, let me suggest this. I would not suggest this on everything, but, you know, we have one point two million dollars set aside for future facilities. If we identify some capital dollars that we need to spend for the Coal House, I'm talking about the foundation, things that you have to do, not just to make it pretty, but to have to do, maybe we tap into that.
So I have a question. I have a feeling that this is, I may be totally wrong, but I have a feeling that this is the same contractor that did the foundation for the chamber that also had foundation issues, and there are two, there, no.
They were not yours, Bart, so I doubt.
No, they weren't.
Oh. Well, we just moved it. I mean, I'm just surprised we're having, just, you know.
It wasn't just moved it. We moved that before PGBT opened.
Twenty ten or twenty eleven.
Twenty twelve, eleven, ten.
So that's typical for Pierbeam House to have foundation problems, is that, you know?
On that kind of soil.
North Texas.
A dollhouse.
It was already.
It sounds, it almost sounds like we need a whole plan for historical preservation for the Coal House.
Okay, now, that's where I was heading, so thank you. I, maybe that is really what we need to do, is, is we really need to develop a plan for it, and that would be a very worthy work plan.
I mean.
Yeah.
We, what, you know.
How do you preserve it? What do you need to do now, and then how do you preserve it for the future?
Exactly.
Yep.
Because we're just putting Band-Aids on it.
That's right. We don't know if that's.
No point in doing all this cosmetic stuff to that and, and not fix that foundation.
Well, I don't wanna fix one thing and break ten more.
I'm sorry?
I don't wanna fix one thing and break ten, ten more. So that's why we need a cohesive plan.
Oh, that was new news to me. I didn't know that we had that issue.
Yep.
So asphalt road replacement plan, basically, I think that's a bigger investment than what we're doing now. Better promotion of the city through a marketing coordinator.
I'm sorry, the asphalt road improvement replacement plan, what I was asking, because I was the one that put that up there, was just for an identified list of streets about the asphalt roads that we have, about the calendar days of, like, okay, this year we're gonna replace the asphalt on these roads, and twenty twenty-five, we're gonna replace the asphalt.
I like my request for a master plan on our.
That's what I was asking for, not, not to, not to fund. I was just asking for, how are we gonna, when are we gonna do it?
All right, all right, that helps, thank you. Hereford Park, obviously, is still gonna be capital related.
Better promotion of cities.
Sorry.
Does that, does that position we're hiring help with that? I mean, it's got to.
Maybe, again, ancillary, you know, you're gonna have somebody focus more on content development, helping both digital and, and print. You're gonna have somebody helping with social media response. What I would, so it, so it does contribute. I would have to say yes, it does contribute. It may not solve, but it, but it does contribute.
Okay.
Let's see, what part we talking about? Shade over playgrounds, okay, that's not really funded right now, except a little bit in the CDBG.
Just bits and pieces, as so with CDBG, we're funding over like side park. There would, that would be, it's about sixty thousand dollars a playground, and I think there are four, one of which is Kids Kingdom, which would be larger than the sixty thousand dollars. You couldn't really put an entire shade over Kids Kingdom, you would have to shade bits and pieces of it. So, but there are three plus Kids Kingdom that currently do not have shade, if my math is right.
That's right.
So.
Yeah, I just, I think that shade over our playground is really critical because it, it just knocks them out of use once you get into the really hot part of the summer. I mean, no one, no one can use them, because it's just the playground, the equipment is too hot.
So, so is, is it that, that we do so many per year until we're done, or do we try to come up with this amount, you know?
When are we gonna have bond talks again?
When we're gonna have what?
When we have the next bond discussion.
The next, well, oh, discussion this fall. Yeah, we can't wait all the way to January or February.
Gets added into a future, next, we put parks back on, and that's due to analysis on that, see if that's come through.
Are the shade structures considered a capital improvement?
In most cases, they're about sixty thousand dollars.
You wouldn't, you may not do it for twenty years if you're gonna do bonds.
Question, actually.
But, you know, you still have tax notes that you can do for seven years.
Yeah.
Once it wasn't lasted right at twenty, so.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I knew dog lives would hit it, but I didn't know they lasted that long.
We had a couple ripped out by storm, but overall, if they, if you pick the right version, they will last you, a hip structure will last eighteen to twenty easy.
I just think that shade, that shade is really important for our parks. I love our parks, but if the kids can't use the playground equipment, it's, it's really, it's, it's a shame. We need to cut them.
Maybe just air conditioner.
So maybe the real question now is, do you guys feel comfortable having a discussion on your top ten, twelve, fifteen items, realizing some of those are already in work and we're working on? Some of them don't require additional work, it's just, you know, staff time, and others are funded, and then, of course, some of the bigger ones are not.
Well, I mean, I think we just did have that discussion.
I think we did.
We did. I think we, we want a golf plan. We've talked about that a long time. I think we need a coil house plan.
I think maybe if you segmented it out into ones that are just plans, and then ones that we're already working on, and then ones that have a dollar amount, in like three sections, it will kinda naturally filter to maybe what you're looking at.
Filter for me or for you? This is your work plan.
Look, it, it would be a start for us, because it would take all of the extraneous stuff that doesn't, isn't money involved, out of that, it'd be easier to look at that way.
So if.
This is our priorities. This is not our work plan.
Yeah, I understand.
That's a good point, but I mean.
But I also think it's, I think what I was looking at it is you need one more column that has funding source, you know, because some of these naturally fall into a budget discussion like this, you're dealing with a couple hundred thousand, and some of them are obviously future bond discussions, and some of them are partnership grant considerations, because they're never gonna happen without that, and so you kinda, that lets you then, kinda like what you were saying, there's kind of a couple of different subgroups that are in there.
Yeah.
Break them down.
Yeah.
Most need to break them down.
I think that would help. All right, so let me, I wanna go back to what Whitney suggested. What if we segmented this between those that are funded, those that we're working on anyway, as an op, because it's either a staff work plan already or something else, and then basically orphan areas, everything else that, that doesn't have a home. Would that list help you guys in being able to kinda like decide on, maybe in a twenty-minute work session, what your final top ten or fifteen would be?
I think so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm getting a little frustrated about you, you tried to segment this to the top ten or fifteen, because to me, that doesn't lend itself to this process. You know, I think if you segmented, like we just talked about, you know, what, what are the plans that need to be developed? What are the budget issues? I don't wanna sit there and go, that's the top ten or the top fifteen. I want you to say, okay, council, you want us to do, you know, a, a plan for Coil House, you want us to do a plan for Waterview, you want us to do a plan for alleys. I can't do all those in the next six months. I could, you know, have resources to do, get an alley plan done in nine months. I have resources to get a Waterview plan done in a year and a half, and that's not the right priority, and I'm sorry. But you gotta tell us that when, once, you know, once we prioritize them. But I don't understand this ten or fifteen thing. I, I never have, it doesn't make sense to me. That's not what this list is about.
In part, it was my attempt to quantify the number of programs and projects we think we can take on and, and work through from staff's perspective.
Right, and, and we need to do that, because we can't just say you gotta do it all.
But to, to your point, and going back to how Whitney was describing it, if we were to segment it this way, I think I could do a better job telling you what I think we can get done in the next two years.
Right.
That's what you would like.
Yes.
Then maybe at the next, next council meeting, I just ask for twenty minutes, send it to you guys ahead of time, but then ask for twenty minutes on the count to, to actually just go over that list and see if you guys were happy with it.
If you say we can't get to, you know, a Waterview, a Waterview Golf Course plan for another two years, we'll, we might have to make a decision a different direction.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that list will help us do that.
Okay. All right, then I have one last question before we kinda break, and that is, are we confident enough and comfortable enough with where you, can you pull back up? we confident enough and comfortable enough with where you, can you pull back up the, how we allocated the additional dollars? Are we comfortable enough with this plan that we can tell our staff what we're proposing for compensation? I mean, we could wait till we adopt it in September, but are you comfortable that, enough that we could make that announcement?